Charlie Redmond. Started walking in tears.
Court, all rise.
That changed my.
Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye, all persons having anything to do before the honorable, the justices of the Supreme Judicial Court, now sitting in Lawrence within and for the Commonwealth, draw near, give your attendance, and you shall be heard. God save the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Court is now open. Please be seated.
Good morning. It is a great pleasure to be in Lawrence. A reminder that we are the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts, which happens to sit in Boston, but occasionally sits in Lawrence. We are all extraordinarily impressed by our new quarters here, and soon I'm going to be thanking those who were involved in it. Let me first welcome a number of persons who graced us by their presence. Perhaps most importantly, a number of students, I think in the back there, from Greater Lawrence Technical High School. Their teachers, Victor Martinez and George Tesrekis, along as well as 12 students who were selected by the Social Studies Department and who have an interest in government and criminal justice. And we hope we will do nothing here to diminish that interest. Lawrence High School, I know I saw the bus coming in as I came in with teachers Jerry Hayes and Heath Churchill. Where's Lawrence? Where are the folks from Lawrence? There they are. And they also have 12 students who were selected by the Social Studies Department with an interest in government and law. And Central Catholic High School, I know has brought some students. I think there are 15 students. Where's Central Catholic? Okay, good. And their teacher, Brian Flaherty, as well as 15 juniors and seniors from the school's mock trial team. So we'll see whether or not the performance here lives up to the mock trial performance that goes on at Central Catholic. I especially appreciate the presence of those folks from Lawrence High School, since I do recognize, as we all do, that it's been a tough week in Lawrence High School. So we thank you for coming here today. I also want to thank the judges who joined us here. First Justice Lynn Rooney. We have Judges Mark Sullivan, Mary McCabe, Kevin Gaffney, Holly Broadbent, Michael Olerich, Stacy Fortes, and we welcome all of you. I want to welcome and thank Clerk Keith McDonough, who, together with Judge Rooney, when I was last visiting Lawrence, hatched the plot that led to us here. I also want to welcome our clerk, Dan Hogan, from Boston, and Brian Lawler, who head up the Clerks Association. Clerk Thomas Driscoll, who is the clerk of courts for the Essex Superior Court, and Assistant District Attorney Jack Dolly, who was the first assistant from the Essex County DA's office and representing that office. So I welcome him here as well. I also want to make a number of thank yous. I mentioned, of course, Judge Rooney and Clerk Magistrate McDonough. There's a great deal of work that goes in to a session which seems to require no work at all. And I want to thank them for all the many, many things that they have done leading up to today to allow us to be here. I also want to thank our Chief Court Officer Greg Meehan, who has provided us with not only security, but also with a wonderful welcome. We look with admiration at this quite terrific bench, which I know was prepared with a great deal of time and effort, and I know will also be one that can be boxed up and be available when we go on the road in the future. So I want to thank those who were involved in this remarkable piece of craftsmanship. And that includes Steve Zaluski, Greg McMahon, Nelson Santos, Richard Crosswell, Ned Skamursky, Frank McCaskill, Juan Carrasco, and Fabio Dos Santos. And we thank you very, very much for the work and time and craftsmanship that's involved in putting together something which looks as if it's always been here, even though we know it's not. And even though we know that First Justice Rooney is going to insist that tomorrow it would go away. So unless she would like to spread out and sit here when she presides over this session. I also want to thank the Chief of Police of the City of Lawrence, James Fitzpatrick, who's assisted us with regard to security. Attorney Matt Ginsburg, the President of the Lawrence Bar Association, and his Administrative Assistant Ruth Kane, who I gather is the one who does all the work at the Lawrence Bar Association and is extraordinary help to Matt in terms of all of his work. And I also again want to thank Clerk Hogan and Clerk Lawler, because I gather they are the ones who are providing lunch to the students before they question us. I know that Clerk Hogan was up late last night cooking the pizza, and he assures me that he used an adequate amount of pepperoni so that you don't need to worry. And finally, there are folks at the SJC who put in a great deal of work, and I want to thank our clerk, Fran Cunnealy, and Maura Looney. I want to thank our court officers, Rob Vitale and Leandro Rodriguez, Jeff Travers, our Information Officer, Carol Lev, our Executive Director, Jennifer Donahue, our Public Information Officer, and Richard De Sorga, who is going to be, I guess, working with the students and is our civic education person at the SJC and has just a wonderful degree of enthusiasm as a former high school teacher himself. So I want to thank all of them. And having done that, I guess it's time for us to get to work. So with that, I'll ask Clerk Cunnealy if you would call the first case.
That would be SJC number 12125, Commonwealth versus Douglas Garcia.
Thank you, Clerk McDonough.
Good morning. May I please the Court. Catherine Stemel appearing on behalf of the Commonwealth. The defendant in this case was convicted in Essex County Superior Court of raping his 19-year-old stepdaughter by digital penetration. At the heart of this case is an evidentiary issue, whether the victim was properly permitted to testify as to a statement made to her by her mother that conveyed a marital communication between her mother and the defendant. The Commonwealth's position is that the victim's testimony was properly admitted under a plain reading of the governing statute.
Can I ask you a factual question first?
Yes.
Was the statement first testified to by the mother?
The statement about what the defendant had told her?
Yes.
It was first asked of the mother when the prosecutor called her on rebuttal. The mother denied that she had told the victim anything about this statement.
And would you agree, just taking that one, that that would not be admissible?
I agree that under the statute, under a plain reading of the statute, it would not be admissible. I think there is case law seeing that, given a lack of objection, such testimony might come in, but under a plain reading of the statute, I think that what should have happened in the case was that we should have been permitted just to call the victim. And we should have been permitted to call the victim for the reason that the prosecutor described, which was that this statement to her mother prompted, was part of the dialogue that prompted the victim to make the statement that the defendant had elicited.
About being maybe pregnant?
About being maybe pregnant.
Are you suggesting it might be under the doctrine of completeness?
I think it might be under the doctrine of completeness. It might be simply to rehabilitate the victim. I mean, in circumstances where the defendant has elicited testimony of the victim in an attempt to impeach her, the Commonwealth can rehabilitate the victim by explaining why this happened. And I think maybe the...
And why would that be true, though? We're talking not about a privilege, as you know, we're talking about a private communication that's a disqualification. And the whole theory is to protect statements made during the marriage. If this statement comes out, then the purpose of the statute, the private communications privilege, the spousal disqualification, is damaged.
I think that's true. I mean, there's no way to say that it doesn't impinge upon that interest. And I think that this court and the appellate courts in Massachusetts have said a couple of things. One is that the courts have held that statutory privileges such as these are to be strictly construed.
Not a privilege.
Privilege. And in this case, in this particular case, I think in that context, I think the difference between a privilege and a disqualification is a distinction without a difference.
What other disqualifications are there?
I'm not sure what other disqualifications.
So how do we know?
There are other... I do not think that it's different.
Do you think law treatment is basically the same in other contexts?
I think, yes, I think that is true. And I think that obviously, from the perspective of how it's applied, whether it can be waived or not, they are different. But I don't think it makes a difference in this case. And I think what the court has held, and I would point the court in particular to in Gray, I can never say it, in Ray Grand Jury subpoena, where this court construed the spousal privilege to strictly, to hold that it doesn't apply to grand jury proceedings, even though obviously the purpose of the marital privilege would be applicable there.
What's the difference between the marital privilege and the spousal disqualification?
The way I think of it, and I confuse them myself, the spousal privilege, is the way I think of it, means that the testifying spouse, the witness spouse, can elect not to testify if he or she chooses. The marital disqualification says that neither husband nor wife shall testify as to the conversation of the other. And that's, I'm sorry, the marital communications disqualification. It specifically references the husband and wife's testimony as to private conversations with the other.
Isn't it, is it case law, or maybe I'm just misremembering, that if there were no objection, it's not as though it throws out the whole proceeding if it comes in, if there's no objection? Is that right?
If there's, yes. And I think Sylvia, and I'm not sure that I cited it for this proposition, but Sylvia is cited in our brief for the suggestion that absent an objection, that it may be considered.
But you agree, even though this came in in rebuttal, that the previous objection preserved the issue, don't you?
I think the problem, the problem with the defendant's objection in this case is that he stated, you know, "For the record, I object." The judge went on to explain, and the defendant said, "Right." To the extent, obviously, it's a determination by this court, I don't think, the appeals court found that it wasn't preserved, that he, in essence, had acquiesced in the judge's reasoning. Certainly, he made an objection, and that's a question for the court.
Can we step back? This is a very strange context in which this comes in. So the defendant, so the wife testifies, and it's not hearsay if the wife testifies, but it's within the realm of disqualification, and she says she has no memory of that statement being made.
Correct.
So there's no evidence that he had admitted to the sexual act through the wife.
Correct.
So then you bring in the alleged victim, and the alleged victim says what the wife had told her, which is hearsay, correct?
Correct.
Not admissible for its truth.
Correct.
But argued for its truth.
I thought it was for impeachment.
I don't, it was not argued for its truth. Well, two things, and this is a thicket of a case, I will admit.
Let me step back. I mean, there was no instruction. The judge said, "You may consider it only as to the credibility of the mother."
That's correct.
So, but the credibility of the mother was at issue only to the extent that she had denied what was otherwise inadmissible because it was within the scope of the disqualification.
Correct.
So you're telling the jury that the only thing you may consider it for is whether or not you believe the mother as to her denial of a statement that should not have even been asked.
And hence the thicket.
And then, and the judge does not give any instruction to the jury to say, "You may not consider it for its truth." The judge only tells the jury, "You may consider it only in evaluating the credibility of the mother."
Well, I think that implicit in the statement, "You may only consider it for evaluating the credibility," is that you may not consider it for its truth. I do not think that the way it came in was correct. I think that the concept was correct. And I would suggest to the court, the concept being that if the mother, you mean the basic point, that if the mother has this conversation with the daughter and says, "This is what the defendant said," you're saying the daughter could testify to that if there weren't a hearsay problem? Correct, correct.
So even if, despite the disqualification, this is incompetent testimony, even if there's no objection, it might be allowed to come in, but even if both sides don't want it in or do want it in, it doesn't matter. The disqualification exists. Say it only comes in for doctrine of completeness, rehabilitation, whatever you want to call it. And let's say that Judge Welch's instruction is only admitting it not for its truth, but for the state of mind of the mother, meaning credibility.
The state of mind of the mother?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's just say that that's what the limiting instruction meant. Why isn't this unduly prejudicial? Now, all of a sudden, in this case, in rebuttal, we're going to hear a statement of the defendant where he's admitting to the sexual conduct. So assuming all those arguments are correct, why isn't the probative that is substantially outweighed by the danger of undue prejudice, and perhaps even only undue if creighton applies in this situation?
When it's in the form of a question, that's it?
Are you talking about the victim's testimony?
Right, right.
A couple of things with regard to that. I'm sorry, I completely lost my train of thought.
Well, the jury's hearing about the statement of the defendant.
The issue is whether it was unfairly prejudicial to come in.
And whether it's unfairly prejudicial.
Correct. Well, first of all, I think that in comparable circumstances, the court acknowledges, the jury's presumed to follow instructions of the court. And this has occurred in very prejudicial circumstances. And I think the cases I cite in my brief are prior bad acts, you know, where prior bad acts are introduced due to things elicited by the defense. And the courts have held in that circumstance that the juries will follow the correct limiting instructions. In this case, I think it's pertinent that the jury's hearing it from the victim herself. I think we all agree, this was a credibility contest between the victim and the defendant. To the extent that the victim is bolstering her own credibility, it's different from if a third party was bolstering it. It was different than, frankly, if the mother was stating it. So as to the prejudicial effect, it depends on the same finding of credibility regarding the victim in this case. So while obviously it could be prejudicial, obviously it is prejudicial. The Commonwealth's interest was also high because we were depending solely on the credibility of the victim. We were asking the jury to believe the victim. And when the defendant attacked her credibility by eliciting this statement, we are entitled to rehabilitate her. And obviously, in any case, you're going to weigh the probative versus prejudicial. But in this case, first of all, the defendant never argued that point below, I don't think. In fact, I don't think that that's the way it was argued by the defendant on appeal either, but as a strict statutory question. So in the circumstances of this case, I don't think that it was unduly prejudicial.
I mean, I take your point that the credibility of the alleged victim matters a great deal, but the judge's instruction didn't say, "You may consider it as to her credibility." You said it may be considered only as to the credibility of the mother, whose credibility did not matter.
I agree, but it didn't, in essence, if you look at the, from a prejudice standpoint, it's as though no evidence about the statement came in, because the mother denied it happened, and the victim's testimony was limited to impeaching the mother. And I don't think any of that was correct. I think that the judge should have allowed the victim to testify for the reasons that the Commonwealth argued.
Because you say that once she's the one testifying, it's not covered by the disqualification.
Correct.
Then it's hearsay.
Correct.
But then it's hearsay.
It is hearsay, but it was in this...
Not admissible for its truth.
Right, for the victim's state of mind to explain the context of the statement that the defendant had elicited.
But I guess Judge Lowy's, the point that I think Judge Lowy's making, or the question he's asking, the one I'll ask again, is, I mean, can a jury hear a statement from a defendant which essentially said, "I admit I did it," when that's the issue at trial, and say, "Oh, you should not consider that, you should consider that only as to the credibility of a woman whose credibility doesn't matter?" What's a jury supposed to do with that?
The only point I would make, which is not an empty point, I think, Your Honor, is that they didn't hear it from the defendant, they didn't even hear it from the mother, they heard it from the victim.
What, I mean, quite apart from that, do you not think that there's an issue in this case about the, I think that the appeals court is absolutely right, the erroneous instruction or explanation to the wife that she did not have to testify?
I think that, I don't think that the colloquy happened correctly. Two things with regard to that. I mean, first is, the case law is very clear that in general, a defendant doesn't have standing to object to his spouse's colloquy.
In this case, it seems, at least I am inferring, that if she knew that, even though it was the defendant who called her, I get that, but she would have, she may well not have testified.
I don't think, I understand that the clues that the court is thinking about when they say that, but I would note a couple of things. First, the defendant did suggest at the beginning that the mother might not testify. He said something kind of confusing, defense counsel, but he suggested she wouldn't testify. And I would suggest that the defense might not have called her if the victim had said what they wanted her to say. She watched the pregnancy statement. But the fact that they then needed her, I don't think should, the court should deduce from that, that the mother didn't want to testify. Second, when the judge asked her the question, the only question he asked her, which was why the colloquy was frankly not sufficient, was about testifying about marital communications. I'm sorry, do I have the quote here?
Yeah, but she didn't have to testify at all.
That's correct. But to the extent she indicated that she would assert her privilege, it was just with regard to the conversations, not with regard to testifying at all. And I think it is evident in this case that the mother had only things helpful to the defendant to say. And the defense, if they wanted to establish otherwise, if they wanted to establish that she wouldn't have testified if she had been properly advised, then they could have filed a motion for a new trial to establish that. And they didn't do that. And I think in the, the standing issue is true even when the spouse is adverse, but in this case, I think it's almost disingenuous for the defense to challenge her waiver.
Well, how about as a general matter? Let's say that you have an insufficient colloquy with somebody who has a spousal privilege, or there's a confusion between the privilege and the disqualification and the colloquy. Is that something where the defendant can't object, cannot object to the spouse testifying? Is that an issue that's preserved that can be beneficial to the defendant on appeal?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow the question.
Can the defendant raise the issue of the insufficiency of the spousal privilege?
No, I think that the case law is clear that he can't, that he lacks standing. And the one exception that the appeals court relied upon is a case that's been described in other cases as exceptional. It was a case where there was a question about fundamental fairness, the Commonwealth versus Rosa, because in that case, a wife had been held overnight without bail before she was brought in to testify, and the court found in that case that she had just been unfairly treated and railroaded, in a sense. And that frankly bears no resemblance to what happened here.
One last question. You said, in closing, the ADA said, quote, "He thought it was his wife," close quote. How is that not arguing "it" for its truth?
I think that, obviously, if you just took that sentence, but if you take it in the context of the paragraph, I mean, the prosecutor was clearly arguing that, arguing it from the perspective of the victim and the credibility of the mother. And in its entirety, despite the slight change in phrasing, I can't believe that jurors would have suddenly thought that this was a different ballgame based on that one sentence. The prosecutor's argument was ringed with phrases like, you know, whether this has the ring of truth. And the entirety of the argument was clearly targeted towards the credibility issue that it was proper for.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mencken, good morning.
Good morning. May I please the Court. Michelle Mencken on behalf of the appellant, Douglas Garcia. I think that the court has tuned in to the fact that we really don't have to reach the statutory privilege question here because the evidence was erroneously admitted for myriad other reasons. And in fact, probably...
You mean, you're focusing on the disqualification, right?
Yes.
Suppose we want to reach it. Can you ask me, what's the effect of the disclosure to a third party on the disqualification?
Well, to be sure, the language of the statute only talks about testimony, so it only disqualifies the spouse from testifying to the contents of the communications. But the purpose of the statute really can only be effectuated, if you think about it, as a disqualification of the communications themselves. So what's the purpose of having a statute that prevents a spouse from testifying to these things as opposed to prevents admission of these things? That would target behavior by the spouse, sort of a betrayal in the taking of the stand and disclosing of these things. But if that were sort of the harm to be combated, then why not disqualify the spouse from taking the stand at all? The wife may betray the husband and take the stand and testify against him. She has the right to do so. And the legislature has said, "But if you do so, you can't go there, you can't talk about these private communications because those are inviolate."
Why should they be inviolate, you know, as opposed to attorney... I mean, you know, if you start from the proposition that every man's evidence is the presumption of what's supposed to be available, and the disqualification, as written in the statute, says neither husband nor wife can testify about private conversations. Once you go outside of that framework, why should we expand that so that a third person is, to whom one of those spouses described the conversation?
Well, first, let me say that the expansion doesn't go very far in terms of enhancing the truth-seeking function, because what you're admitting is really unreliable evidence that is probably objectionable on a number of grounds. If you're talking about...
Suppose it was a confession?
Well, then you have the additional problem of it being incredibly prejudicial. And I agree with Justice Lowy's line of questioning about how can this come in and not throw the case against the defendant in any form? And I think that the appeals court was right to focus on that. But if you're, with the exception of the circumstance that you'll see in some cases where, say, in a divorce case, a defendant tape records a private communication with the wife and then seeks to play that in court, with the exception of that, when you're talking about the evidence coming in in a different form, you're talking about it, totem pole hearsay, basically. So it's problematic, and it's not that reliable. So it doesn't really enhance the truth-seeking function.
Can I ask you a question about the history of the statute? When was this statute enacted, and is there any legislative history?
I believe that it was 1875, and I have to check my notes, and there's really no legislative history.
Legislative history. Is there any rationale that has to do with the conception of marriage that was in effect in the late 1800s about it not being something that should be, I mean, if marriage was then looked upon as really just one entity, I'm just wondering whether that played into this notion that, you know, really it would be like testifying against yourself?
I believe that historically, that that was an issue, but I think that the statute has been revisited and not amended since then, and sort of in the development of the case law. That framework has become antiquated, but the need for this protection has survived even under the new conception of marriage.
And how does this statute relate to the spousal privilege? When was the spousal privilege?
I think they were enacted together.
Together.
This is all one piece of legislation.
Okay.
There is an amendment to the statute pending. It's passed in the House, and it's, it's gone on to the Senate Rules Committee, which doesn't relate to the spousal privilege, but it relates to a parent-child privilege. And it's interesting to look at, and I think trying to get back to what Justice Buxford was asking about, why protect this? Why protect this any differently than, say, an attorney-client privilege or the clergy privilege? And I want to, I want to note that it's difficult to sort of line up the marital privilege next to the statutory privileges that come after it in Chapter 233, because they're all so different in terms of who can assert the privilege, whether they're self-activating or not, what disclosures are permitted or prohibited, and in what contexts. They're all over the place, so we can't sort of line them up and try to get uniformity. But there's an important distinction between all of those sort of client-professional privileges and the marital privilege and the child-parent privilege, which is that in the professional context, there are also ethical constraints that prevent the professional, for ethical reasons, and perhaps on fear of sanction from some, from an oversight body, from disclosing confidences.
But that wouldn't apply to a third person, right?
Well, well, sometimes yes, and sometimes no. I mean, it depends how the third person came about the, came about the material.
Well, assume it's because it was disclosed by one of the spouses.
Well, our position is that if it's disclosed by one of the spouses, it's still disqualified because it's the communications themselves that are privileged. But if you, if you look at an attorney who has disclosed something in bad faith, I think that the case law is that that is not competent evidence against the person, that the person has a right to prevent the use of that information against them.
Ms. Mencken, isn't the point of the third party not impacting it, that the whole point is to protect private communications between spouses? That there is sanctity in those communications during the marriage? And if one of those spouses says something to somebody else and it comes out, that's not fair to the other spouse as it relates to the purpose of the disqualification?
I completely agree with that, and really, you know, if you look at the, at the federal system, it's a privilege, not a disqualification in the federal system, but it has roots that are as ancient as our disqualifications' roots. And, and, and what they do is, and what the parent-child privilege does, is they make it that, that both parties have to consent, you can't disclose without the other one's permission. You know, what the effect of that is, I mean, it should be that that means that that material is not competent evidence against the defendant if his wife has gone and disclosed it without his permission. And again, it's not, you know, the wife has no duty, unlike an attorney or a psychotherapist or a priest, to keep those things confident. So the only way to really create this, this, this sanctuary that the legislature was clearly trying to do, the only way to do that is to actually focus on the communications themselves.
But the legislation itself reads, "Neither husband nor wife shall testify as to private conversations with the other." And I think you agreed that that speaks only of testimony by one against the other and not the testimony of a third party.
I agree, and I think that the, the reason that this hasn't really come up is where I started with it, it's just, it may have been hard for the legislature to foresee that, you know, we would be talking about this hearsay coming, I mean, it's already not supposed to come in. It's just, that's the rules of evidence. If something is disclosed to somebody else, that person's not allowed to come in and say, "Oh, she told me that he said that blah-dity-blah."
But I guess my question to you is, are you saying that we should interpret the statute to encompass a bar against private communications even when they don't come in through the testimony of the husband or the wife? Or are you saying that we should, we should devise a common law rule which would go beyond what the statute provides?
I'm saying, I would urge the court to interpret the statute as encompassing the communicate, as protecting the communications themselves. I think that the, that if you look at the language in the cases that we've cited, this has been the sort of instinctual way that the statute has been interpreted over the years, and it's the way that commentators-
So no matter whether it falls into a hearsay exception?
Yeah, no, get back to the hearsay stuff, because that, I think that's the reason it won't come in, right? It's all hearsay.
Ordinarily, it won't come in because it's hearsay. And in this circumstance, even, even if, and I strongly dispute my sister's position that this could have come in for the complainant's state of mind, but in this situation, even if it could come in, it was just too prejudicial to come in for that purpose. And really, it was such a tangential point, I mean, this was completely collateral, so it had very, very minimal, if any, probative value. Unlike, I mean, so here you have, you have the complaining witness who initially lied, it should be noted, and said that she never claimed to be pregnant, and it wasn't until she got recalled and fixed up by the prosecutor that she said, "Well, I said it, but it's because," and she gave her explanation. Part of that explanation was that her, the complainant's comment about claiming to be pregnant immediately followed the mother's reportedly saying, "Well, you're not going to be able to prove this case, there's no physical proof." So that's, there's a sort of a logical connection there, and if the complainant was going to be allowed to test, to be rehabilitated in this way, then, you know, something with a direct link like that arguably is more appropriate. But this, as context for that, is so, it's so tangential that it couldn't possibly be permitted, even if it weren't so prejudicial, which it is.
The hearsay issue is not going to solve the statutory interpretation question that Chief Justice Gans just asked, because the person testifying to the private communication may be testifying in a manner that the statement is an admission by a party opponent. So for instance, it could have been the criminal defendant. So the fact that it's hearsay is not going to solve the statutory interpretation question.
Well, the reason that I brought it up, and I'll get back to what you just said, but the reason that I brought it up is that, that would explain why the legislature didn't take the time to draft out that eventuality, because it's already built into the rules of evidence.
But, but here's, in, for instance, the psychotherapist privilege, I think I'm correct about this, the privilege, what is privileged is the communication, right? You can't have testimony about the communication.
That's correct. I think, though, just to be accurate, I think that with the psychotherapist patient privilege, there's a case of this court called Brand Wine, which actually says this really only, it only applies when there's a sort of a criminal proceeding going on.
Okay, but, but doesn't the statute use the word "communication"?
Yes.
So you've got that, that's focusing on the, I'm trying to get to your point that really, even though they said in terms of husband or wife shall not testify, really what they were after was the conversation. I'm just suggesting that that statute suggests if they wanted to do that, they knew how to do that.
Well, and again, we point in our brief that those, those other statutory privileges, including the psychotherapist patient privilege, were written way longer, way, more recently than this, than the marital privilege. And I don't think that it's fair to just assume that the legislature didn't revise the marital disqualification because they meant to keep it that way, when it could just as easily be inferred that the legislature was satisfied, that the courts were interpreting or speaking of the statute as if the communications themselves were disqualified anyway, so there wasn't the need to go back and revise it. And it's not as if it's been revised and they deliberately didn't change that language. It just hasn't been revisited. But the, you made a point about that this could sometimes be the admission of the party opponent, and I just want to remind the court that this actually would be still totem pole. So let's say that you have a police officer who wants to testify to the state of police knowledge at a certain point in the investigation, and wants to say, "Well, the wife told me that the husband told him that the murder weapon was under the bed." Well, that's still a problem, and this court has actually faced this in the case Walker that cited in our briefs. It's still a problem because you've got the, you've got the hearsay of the wife's report to the officer.
I guess one, one concern, let's imagine you have a husband beating his wife, making statements during the course of the beating. Wife then, police come, wife reports what the husband said while he was beating her. That testimony can't come in?
No, it can't. And, you know, the wife is going to make excited utterances in that context describing the actual act of the assault, and that is the offense. And so, you know, what relevance would those communications have? You also, Your Honor, in, depending on the factual circumstances, there's a question of whether this is the kind of conversation or communication that is covered by the statute versus, you know, a verbal act or a threat. I mean, this just isn't that case.
So is there case law that says, in Chief Justice Gans's example, that because of the circumstances in which that conversation is taking place, it's, it's not covered?
Well-
Side of the scope of the statute?
I think that there are cases that talk about written communications. I don't know of any case that's that scenario, but I do know that there are cases talking about written communications where the court has said that this is not a conversation that is covered by the statute.
I'm sorry, isn't there something in the statute that exempts when there are crimes against the spouse?
That's-
Statements?
That's a privilege.
I believe that that's the privilege. I would have to review the statute quickly.
But it's certainly not a conversation.
It's not a conversation. So if there are no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
SJC number 12114, Commonwealth versus Joel D. Morgan.
Give us one moment.
May it please the Court, good morning, Your Honors. My name is Melissa Johnson. I'm an Assistant District Attorney in Middlesex here on behalf of the Commonwealth. The Lowell District Court has reported two questions to this court regarding the Valor Act. First, may a district court judge exercise discretion and enter a coif after an admission to an OUI? Second, in spite of the fact that there is a legislative directive in the OUI statute that would prohibit that? And the second question is, if that's not possible, does the Valor Act allow a court to dismiss the charge without an admission and without the consent of the Commonwealth, even though the Valor Act itself does not provide for any kind of dispositional alternatives?
What about Section 7 of the statute?
Your Honor, Section 7 of the statute of 276A does not apply to Sections 11 and 12 of the statute. Because, Your Honor, reading each section of the statute from 2 to 7 specifically, and that part was enacted in 1974 to provide dispositional alternatives for, for lack of a better word, post-juvenile 18 to 21-year-olds. If you look at Sections 2 through 7, and specifically 5 through 7, which talk about the dispositions, they all explicitly refer back to eligibility under Section 2, a post-juvenile, explicitly refer back to that statute. And it's interesting, because if you look at Sections 10 and 11, which were added as part of the Valor Act in 2012, the language of those statutes actually is almost verbatim, what the language is in Sections 2 and 3, almost verbatim. And yet, the 10 and 11 do not refer back to Sections 2 through 7, and they don't add any other language.
But Section 2 and 10 both use the words "shall have the jurisdiction to divert."
Yes, but divert doesn't mean dismiss, Your Honor.
So what, what happens with the Valor Act when there's that disposition, there's a diversion? What happens? I don't understand how the Valor Act is supposed to work on your analysis.
Would you mind if I answered her question first? Your Honor, the legislative intent is really the most, I think, probative thing to look at as far as what the Valor Act does with respect to 10 and 11. The Valor Act was enacted to provide veterans access, to provide livelihood, opportunity, and resources, that's the name of it. And if you look at all of the sections of the Valor Act, it talks about assisting veterans with employment, with education, with services. Now, 10 and 11 specifically talk about identifying veterans who are in crisis at the earliest juncture, and at that juncture, providing some sort of protocol for assessing them and finding a suitable program for them.
It also says divert, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I still don't understand what happens to the criminal charges against them, you know, I mean-
My question is-
The statute is not explicit on that. We know that from the statute really talks about continuing the case to assess the veteran. Now, from a prosecutor's perspective, looking at what happens in this situation, we have a situation where a veteran who does not have a record, where a program has been identified, this could provide the ideal situation for a pre-trial probation, predispositional alternative, but the Commonwealth has to agree to that disposition under Tim T. and its progeny. So it's not without substance, Your Honor. It does effectuate the intent of the legislature in providing, identifying-
Why are you so sure that the legislature didn't intend more than that?
Because, number one, it's not in the statute, 11 and 12, it never refers back to Sections 2 and 7, never refers back to them, never includes the language of Sections 5 through 7. The legislator, legislature could have done that had it wanted to. In fact, it took all the other language with it. So it clearly was aware of 2 through 7, and yet it didn't include that language.
So what meaning should we take from the fact that the statute reads, "Section 276A of the general laws is hereby amended by adding the following section, Section 10." So it, the legislature chose to put it in Chapter 276A-
Yes.
-and chose to make it Section 10.
Yes.
And why would they do that if there was no relevance to Sections 1 through 9 to Sections 10 and 11?
Your Honor, there are plenty of chapters where the, where sections do not relate to one another. I believe that it was put into that particular chapter to talk about the idea that the district court now has the power, the jurisdiction, to put the brakes on a criminal prosecution, which it did not have before, and say, "This is a veteran who might be in crisis, let's get him assessed, let's take the time."
Do you agree that the, the ability to dismiss at the end of diversion is what makes it effective? So as you read it, the jurisdiction to divert would, would say jurisdiction to divert if the DA's office agrees?
Yes.
Well, what's the point of that?
Because the veteran is actually identified at the earliest juncture-
But you're objecting.
So the judge says, "Fine, we're going to, this person qualifies, let's put him in a diversion program, the person does everything they need to do under the Valor Act." At the end of the day, the DA says, "We don't agree," and the judge says, "Okay, well, the case is still alive."
And yet, the veteran has been identified and has received treatment. So that's the benefit of the statute. That is what the legislature has provided for.
Ms. Johnson, let me ask you, the other cases that have cited Article 30 have involved situations where there was no statutory authority for the judge to do what he did or she did, dismiss a case. This, this situation is different. We have a statute here. So it, it just seems to me that we have to search for the reason why the legislature did that. I mean, they could do what you're suggesting without the statute, right?
They could dismiss with-
Treatment, treatment.
Treatment, yes.
You said that the only advantage is treatment. Well, that, that could happen without the statute.
That's true, but the district court now has the obligation through the probation department to identify a veteran at the earliest possible juncture and assess that veteran. And as far as the other cases and other situations where this is possible, again, the statute 11 and 12 provides no avenue for ult- 11 and 12 provides no avenue for ultimate disposition. And I think if we look at what is problematic in terms of my sister's interpretation, if it was taken to its logical extension, that a District Court judge would be able to dismiss over the objection of the Commonwealth, the problem is, is that 11, these sections do not have any limitation on the type of cases that could be affected by it, unlike other statutes such as the accord and satisfaction, which is-
You could indict the person.
Yeah.
We could indict the person.
And then they wouldn't be, then they wouldn't-
Superior Court doesn't, can't do this.
Right.
That's true. That's true.
So if you don't-
But just looking at the statute itself, I mean, the problem is, is that there are cases which may, we may want to handle in District Court, such as indecent assault and battery, OUI 3rd, OUI 4th, OUI 5th, motor vehicle homicides. These are significant cases in which-
Right, and a significant case you indict, and the Valor Act doesn't apply.
That could be the case, but I think taking in the statute in and of itself and looking at what it could possibly done, be done here, in that case, the victim's voice may not be heard.
Well, Section 4 indicates certain crimes that can't be diverted.
And that's assuming that 11 and 12 refer back to Section 4. Section 4 specifically talks about eligibility under Section 2, which is that post-juvenile. So it's very important to read Sections 2 through 7 together because they refer back to each other, whereas 11 and 12-
Here it says, the, Section 11 says that the judge should consider the opinion of the Commonwealth.
And that's all.
It doesn't say that the Commonwealth has the right to veto what the judge wants to do.
And that is only with respect to whether the case can be continued for an assessment. That has nothing to do with the disposition of the case, because that statute 11 and 12 are absolutely silent. So it puts us in a position where we do have cases where the victim's voice, the community's voice, may never be heard if this is taken to that logical extension, and that is in violation of Tim T., Commonwealth versus Tim T. This is, in essence, like a pretrial probation statute, kind of like 276, Section 87, where there really provides no ultimate disposition for a case, but where the prosecutor upon agreement can agree to certain conditions and at the end could dismiss the case.
You agree, though, that this discussion is beyond what Judge Pearson is asking? She's really, she wants to coiff the case-
Right.
And is asking whether or not, because of Chapter 90, there can't be a coiff, because there's already been a 24D within 10 years.
I think what we've been discussing is really the second question, Your Honor. The first question, I agree, is much more straightforward. She's asking, "Well, can I coiff the case even though there's 90, Section 24?" And I think if you look at 278, Section 18, it is clear, the District Court can coiff on an admission unless it's prohibited by law. And here we have a statute, 90, Section 24, which is specific, and it is unequivocal in its language and intent, that these type of cases do not get coiffed. So there is a conflict here, the more specific statute would control. So an answer to the first question, Your Honor, is very straightforward.
Well, the defendant's going to say that the Valor Act came afterwards.
And it's more specific because it only applies to veterans.
Right.
But the specificity has to do more with the type of law, the legislation there is. And I think that if we take it, again, to its logical extension, we could have the Valor Act swallowing up every other law. Because of all of these cases now, the District Court would have the jurisdiction to dismiss it or to do what it wants over the Commonwealth's objection. It could coiff other types of cases upon an admission, but where there's a specific, unequivocal law, which is prohibiting the District Court from doing that, that is the one that must control.
And why can't the legislature do that if it believes that veterans who have served are entitled to a degree of deference that the rest of us may not enjoy?
And they do get special consideration, Your Honor, absolutely.
What consideration are they getting? They're getting a 14-day continuance, according to you, and that's it?
To be assessed and to find a program for-
Judge, I mean, you agree that a judge could do that without the Valor Act?
Yes.
A judge could do that with anybody. If somebody says, "This person has PTSD, Your Honor, I'd like 14 days," to give the person the opportunity to be examined by a clinical psychologist and to report back to you as to whether you should consider the PTSD in terms of how we proceed, a judge can say, "I'll continue the case for 14 days."
But what the Valor Act does, and this is, is have a specialized protocol for veterans at the very earliest juncture, putting the onus on the probation department to identify right away these particular people. It is not insignificant, because if you think about what the Valor Act is for, it is to provide services. I don't see anywhere in Section 10 and 11 where it talks about getting out-
But the services are connected to the disposition of the case.
And for that reason, for a, from a prosecutor's perspective, looking at that, that a program would be in place with a veteran that has no record, it would be a perfect opportunity to agree to a pretrial.
But you get to call all the shots.
And that's what Article 30 does say in certain cir-
When you say Article 30, did you, Rule 24 requires, if you're going to be challenging the constitutionality of a statute, to inform the Attorney General so that she may decide whether to intervene? Did you do that? Has the AG decided whether she wishes to intervene as to your claim that this is unconstitutional and violation of Article 30?
Your Honor, we're not claiming it's unconstitutional. We're trying to harmonize it with Article 30, as this Court did before with the accord and satisfaction statute, which has specific-
Let me ask you this question. If the statute had been specific and had referenced back to Section 7 specifically, Article 30 problem?
I think it would be less of a discussion there, absolutely, although I have to be honest with you, with Sections 2 through 7 that were enacted back in 1974, there's been no case determination on them.
Doesn't the legislature get to define crimes and punishments?
Absolutely, Your Honor, but if I could just have a moment to respond to that, I notice that my time is running out. Your Honor had the same opportunity, for example, with the accord and satisfaction statute, Section 55. And what, how this Court harmonized that was to determine whether, in this particular statute, whether there was unfettered discretion on the part of the District Court judge. And it said, because this statute is very specific as far as the types of crime, and the fact that the victim's voice will be heard, the victim has to come forward and say, "I agree, I have been satisfied," that that discretion is not unfettered. But here, we have a statute that could potentially swallow up the Commonwealth's discretion under Article 30, if it's taken to the logical extension that my sister would like it to. This is an example of where discretion could be unfettered, and for that reason, if it's interpreted in that manner, as opposed to how it was written, separate and apart from Sections 2 through 7, that's the only way to harmonize it with Article 30. That's the only way to harmonize it with the legislative intent of the Valor Act, of Section 90, 24, the OUI statute, and the prosecutor's discretion. I see that my time is up. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Ms. Huggets.
Good morning, Your Honor. May it please the Court, Elizabeth Huggets on behalf of Joel Morgan, the defendant appellate. I'm accompanied today by attorney Benjamin Keen. In 2012, the legislature recognized that the longest continuous conflict in U.S. history was taking a toll on our U.S. servicemen and women. They enacted the Valor Act in order to give the District Court the power to direct those individuals to the appropriate state and federal agencies so that they may seek treatment. The defendant in this case, Joel Morgan, is exactly who the legislature envisioned, a combat veteran who completed three combat tours, back-to-back, in Iraq and Afghanistan, who returned home to Massachusetts broken. He had PTSD and untreated by the VA. He began self-medicating with heroin. His opioid addiction was a direct result of his war-related trauma. It is significant here that the District Court judge found that he qualified for diversion under the Valor Act, and more importantly, that she and her discretion felt that he would benefit for treatment specifically under the Valor Act. My argument here today is twofold, and one, it's that a continuance without a finding and a dismissal is available under the Valor Act, and two, that those dispositions are available on and operating under the influence second offense, notwithstanding the language of Chapter 90. At great length, we talked, we've talked already today about Chapter 276A. It must be read as a whole, otherwise Sections 10 and 11-
I'd say to Ms. Johnson's argument that, you know, it references or it sort of incorporates in the first sections of 276A, but says nothing about 7, and 7 itself references back.
What I have to say to that, Your Honor, is that it was added to a chapter that was called District Court Pretrial Diversion for Selected Offenders. The intent of the legislature was that these individuals, including the veterans, would be diverted. And so I think that the lack of look back-
And the intent is manifested where?
The intent is manifested in that Sections 10 and 11 were added to a chapter that allowed for diversion already for a different group of selected offenders, and then already provided a process for it. There's no argument that Sections 10 and 11 do not talk about the process after the two-week assessment period, but it is illogical to imagine that the legislature just created a statute that said, "The Court can assess this, send this person on a two-week continuance to have them assessed for treatment options." The Court can already do that. The reading of the Commonwealth on this is illogical. It makes the Valor Act ineffectual, and I think there's no, no reading that could suggest the legislature didn't intend for these cases to have procedure past the two-week assessment period. I think it's also clear from the legislative intent. In our brief, we provided a copy of an earlier draft of the Valor Act, and in that draft, there was a study that was going to be gathering statistics on the number of cases that were diverted and then ultimately dismissed. Now, the study was removed from the final draft, but none of the other language in the Valor Act was changed to suggest that the legislature clearly intended that these cases would be dismissed.
Can I?
Sure.
I'm obviously not reading this correctly, but I'm looking at Section 11, and the penultimate sentence says, or, and the last one, "The Court may consider the recommendations of the assessment of any diagnosing or treating licensed mental health professional for the defendant for pretrial diversion or the imposition of a sentence." So, but you say it doesn't get to diversion? I mean, I'm, that isn't, that isn't dispositional language?
I do believe it's dispositional language. I think that, I was addressing the lack of language that we see in Chapter, in Section 7, where it specifically enumerates that the judge can do four things. One, it can stay the proceedings and continue the case on. Two, it can dismiss or continue without a finding. Or three, it can restore it to the criminal proceedings if you have an individual who's unsuccessful on diversion. I do think that there is language in Section 11 that is dispositional. I don't think it's necessarily as specific as Section 7 is, and I think that that's why it's necessary to look back at the prior sections in order to give 10 and 11 full effect.
Do you have any sense of the Valor Act's importance in the veterans' courts?
I don't know. I don't know about the importance of the Valor Act in the veterans' courts. My understanding is that they operate separately from the Valor Act. There's an entire system that's set up to help veterans, and they don't necessarily have to qualify under the Valor Act. I do know that there are some veterans' courts that are post-dispositional, that allow for people who haven't had, who have prior convictions. Under the Valor Act, you cannot have any prior convictions or pending cases, and I don't believe that is true in the majority of the veterans' courts, but I don't have any specific experience.
So I'm taking it from both you and Ms. Johnson, that there is no, nothing in the legislative history deals with this question of how do you, let's just take OUI specifically, that has very specific dispositional requirements and limitations. That was never discussed by the legislature or those that drafted this? There's no evidence that this was on-
There's no evident, I can tell you, I did quite a bit of research in the Val, on the Valor Act, and there was no sort of discussion as to how these would necessarily operate with other laws. However, I think that if we look at the body of laws that we have in the Commonwealth today, it suggests that we can move forward with both Chapter 90, Section 24, and these pretrial diversion statutes together and have a harmonious reading. And so I don't think that there's any legislative history that talks about, that actually shows that the legislators were talking about these, but I think that the legislation that has been enacted shows that they can be read together and that Chapter 90, in fact, does not preclude pretrial diversion.
But what about continuance without a finding? So the legislature is presumed, when they passed the Valor Act, to understand that Chapter 90, Section 24, in certain circumstances, does not allow for a continuance without a finding. So why should there be a continuance without a finding in the circumstances of this case?
Because it doesn't speak to pretrial diversion. Chapter 90 says that prosecution commenced on, under this chapter cannot be placed on file or continue without a finding except for under 24D. It doesn't say anything about pretrial diversion, and I think that that lack of language shows that it doesn't prohibit pretrial diversion.
You're saying that you couldn't have a coiff, but there could be pretrial diversion?
No, I'm saying that, I'm separating sort of the language. I'm saying that you can have a coiff under pretrial diversion, you can't have a coiff under Chapter 90, Section 24. And so, but you could still continue without a finding on one of those charges under a different statute that allows for pretrial diversion, because there do exist other statutes that do allow for pretrial diversion on this specific charge. Chapter 111E allows for such diversion for this specific charge, which, if we read Chapter 90 to say that it cannot be disposed of, these charges cannot be disposed of under any other section or chapter except for Chapter 90, Section 24, would be in direct conflict with Chapter 111E, which allows drug-dependent individuals who are charged with drug-related offenses to benefit from treatment and ultimately have their cases dismissed. And that chapter defines Chapter 90, Section 24 as one of the drug-related offenses that is eligible for diversion.
So what do we do with this conflict? I mean, the Valor Act came last, but I don't think, is there any language that says notwithstanding any other provision of law, which is sometimes found in statutes, that we can point to to say they understood that this would be in conflict and they meant for this to prevail or not?
I don't think it's necessarily in conflict. I think that that's my argument, and I will address it.
How is it not in conflict?
Because-
If you're not, if you're not a veteran, there's no doubt that-
Right.
You would not have the ability to get a coiff?
But you would allow, you would be allowed to have a dismissal under Chapter 111E. So I think, I think the reason why I say they're not in conflict is that Chapter 90, Section 24 does not speak of pretrial diversion at all, and pretrial diversion, and as my reforms, have been created by the legislature over the past four decades. Chapter 111E was adopted in 1981, and the first nine chapters of Chapter, first nine sections of Chapter 276A were created in '74, and Chapter 90, Section 24 has been amended, I believe, at least 20 times since then. So I say that Chapter 90, Section 24 goes forward in its normal sense for the majority of defendants that are charged with that crime. However, the legislature has recognized that there are individuals with specialized needs, and so it has created diversion. And I want to address diversion, because I believe Justice Bosford brought that up with my sister, and you asked, "What does diversion mean?" There's no statutory definition of diversion, but if we look at the dictionary definition of diversion, it means to take out of the normal course of our normal route, to stray from the normal procedure. My argument is that Chapter 90, Section 24's language is the normal procedure, and Chapter 276A, Chapter 111E, and the like are the diverted routes. And it is clear that the legislature intended to have these diverted routes, and it's to stray from the norm, and it's been created because we've recognized, and the system recognizes, that individuals come into this court with their own issues, and we are developing our system to address those specific issues, and we're seeing that across the Commonwealth and specialized courts and pretrial diversion programs. So it is particularly appropriate here, where the Commonwealth recognizes, I mean, the legislature recognizes that we've been in two wars for 15 years, and now we need to deal with and help these individuals that are coming back with war-related trauma. And if you look at Chapter 90, and, Chapter 90, Section 24, and Chapter 276A, we can achieve the purposes of both, which both have rehabilitative services, but it makes much more sense, and it's clear that that's a legislature intended, is to allow an individual like Mr. Morgan to proceed forward under the Valor Act, because the VA is going to be able to give him more appropriate services- is going to be able to give him more appropriate services than he would be able to receive under Chapter 90, Section 24, which is essentially a 16-week outpatient program or a two-week inpatient program that talks about the effects of alcohol on your brain. He's not charged with alcohol. He's charged with drugs. He has an opiate addiction that, that he developed because of his war-related trauma. He's now in counseling at a VA facility that only works with combat veterans. It is clear that the legislature recognized that there were going to be state and federal agencies that could deal and help these individuals much better than the laws under Chapter 90, Section 24. So, I believe that we can have a reading of these two, of these two statutes that are consistent. And quite frankly, there's, these two, the statute, Chapter 90, Section 24, has existed with other pretrial diversions for decades at this point and have been able to move forward. Chapter 111E is used consistently.
I thought, Chapter 111E does not just apply to people who are charged with a drug offense?
It doesn't. There are two sections. There are two sections. So, there's, it's not, it's for individuals who are drug-dependent. It's about drug rehabilitation. There's one section that is for drug offenses, which are specifically defined and includes the OUI statute. And then there are other individuals who are not charged with drug-related offenses but are very clearly drug-dependent.
How do you respond to the questions about Article 30?
There's not a separate, I don't believe there's a separation of powers issue here, largely because it is the only, I think, logical reading is that 276A has to be addressed together. It has to be read as a whole. And thus, there is a specific grant of authority by the legislature to the district court that dismissal is appropriate over the Commonwealth's objection. In fact, Commonwealth v. Piles, a 1996 case, specifically cites Chapter 276A as an example of a valid judicial dismissal, dismissal over the Commonwealth's objection, and rejects the separation of powers argument that is brought forward by the Commonwealth in that case.
Because the legislature has specified that is what is to happen.
Correct. Correct. And I would just like to point out one more thing in this case, and that is that, well, actually, I'm going to address Judge, Justice Gantz's question about if these, if these two laws are in conflict. And I think that Judge Loi has already gotten at this, and that if the court finds that these two statutes are in conflict, I would argue that, that obviously the statute that's later in time governs. I also don't necessarily think that Chapter 90, Section 24 is more specific than the Valor Act. The Valor Act, if we read it as a whole, is very specific in nature as to how a defendant veteran would proceed forward in the criminal justice system through an assessment, a report that goes back to the court, a 90-day continuance with reporting to the court, and then another period of process where the court decides what to do. But then finally, I would rely on the rule of lenity that says where there's any rational doubt, that the benefit goes to the veteran defendant. And lastly, the Valor Act is not just about what we are talking about here today, which is the ultimate disposition of a case. It's about connecting our veterans to the appropriate service providers so that they may seek treatment.
That's exactly what Ms. Johnson says.
It is. It is. But it is clear that the legislature also intended that those individuals would be able to benefit not only from the treatment, but to have their cases dismissed that we could go forward, because they added it to the chapter that said pretrial diversion.
But when they added it to that chapter.
Mm-hmm.
And passed this legislation, the legislature was aware that under Chapter 90, Section 24, there couldn't be a continuance without a finding in the circumstances of this case. So, the legislature could have said, with the Valor Act, we're going to allow a continuance without a finding in these circumstances.
I believe that when they created the last two sections of Chapter 276A, they created an exception to that rule. And they've created those exceptions before, under 24D, under 276, under the prior sections of 276A. So, I believe that it was an exception. And the legislature has limited the cases for which diversion could, can occur. I mean, as the court has already recognized, it's only in the district court and only to individuals who have no prior conviction or pending cases. And Section 4 specifically enumerates charges for which an otherwise eligible defendant cannot move forward under diversion, and the OUI statute is not included in those prohibited charges.
Doesn't mean it's not necessarily permitted.
I think the fact that the legislature said so, said so at one point, what allows for diversion, and didn't say so in the second, means that we're not, they're not adding additional charges for which are prohibited. And I think that their creation of the diversion for veterans was the exception to Chapter 90, Section 24.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commonwealth for us is Heather Dragata.
Good morning, Chief Justice Gantz. May it please the court, Patrick Levin, on behalf of Heather Dragata, who appeals this morning from a conviction of recklessly permitting her boyfriend, Stephen Amos, to injure her infant daughter, Autumn. In my brief, I framed the legal issue before the court this morning as the point at which criminal liability attaches to one parent for an injury unintentionally inflicted upon a child by the other parent.
So, the Commonwealth takes issue with that?
The Commonwealth takes issue with that characterization, and they're very dismissive of the idea that the unintentional nature of this injury is relevant to, to this court's determination this morning. And they're right that it doesn't provide a defense for Stephen, because assault and battery upon a child under Section 13J is not a specific intent crime with respect to the injury, but it's very relevant to Heather's conviction, because the kind of person that Stephen is bears, to a great degree, upon Heather's mens rea in this case.
But, just, I mean, do you need to go there? I mean, whatever Stephen Amos's intent was, isn't the question, what was the evidence available to your client that would put her on notice of X, Y, or Z?
Yes. You're exactly right, Justice Bosford. And that's, that's what I'm getting at, is we would have a very different case here if there was some evidence that Stephen harbored some animus towards this child, that he meant to hurt her. That the case, that one of the only two cases that the appeals court relied on in affirming the conviction, Commonwealth versus Rodriguez, is a good contrast case, because there, the evidence suggested that there was a, in fact, an intentional battering is the word that they used, but that, that the boyfriend in that case, over an extended period of time, essentially was beating this baby, and that the defendant in Rodriguez was present and saw what was happening and didn't do anything about it. That's, and it's clear what the recklessness is in that kind of a situation, that there's a duty to act and a failure to abide by that duty.
Aren't we using an objective test?
Yes, Your Honor. I think this, the case has mostly been argued on the, on an objective basis.
So, if, if the, your client objectively would have realized there was a danger from these so-called maneuvers, then your client would be liable?
That's essentially right, yes. That if, if a reasonable person in her position would have known that there was a substantial likelihood that her partner was going to inflict a serious injury on the child if she left them alone for a few minutes, then this conviction is correct.
Mr. Levin, is it true that we have to narrow the factual focus to that one incident where she went into the shower while Mr. Amos, is that the sum and substance of the case?
That was the basis of the only indictment that the judge convicted her on. There were three indictments, and the, he, she was acquitted on the other two.
I take it the theory of the Commonwealth is that she, although she wasn't convicted of it, that, that the prior incidents of the bicycle or the failed or improperly performed bicycle maneuver would have put a reasonable person on notice that something was amiss, and she, and the child should not be left with him?
Yes, that's, that's the theory. And I want to emphasize the point that I made in my brief, which is that there just is no evidence that she saw him doing something that hurt the child more than one time.
Didn't she use the maneuver often, consistently, for a week or so? And when they, when the boyfriend used the maneuver, the child had a reaction?
So, the evidence is, in terms of the child's reaction, the evidence is that not often, but sometimes, she would cry when he did this.
And get red in the face?
And there's some, so there's some conflicting testimony on, on this point, but if you look carefully at the DCF investigator, Amy Silverio's cross-examination, she specifically asked to affirmatively choose between the two versions, what she said on direct examination and what is contained in her written report, which is contemporaneous with the interviews that she conducted. And she specifically says that she stands by what's written in the report. She disavows the earlier testimony. And, and so the evidence that the judge was entitled to credit is that sometimes, but not often, Autumn would cry when he did this.
Was there, was there any evidence that after she told him to stop doing it, that he did?
There is evidence.
That he did, he kept going?
That he kept, that he did it after she told him not to do the bicycling adaptation.
There is evidence that he kept doing it for another week after she told him to stop, but there's no evidence that she ever knew about that. All of the evidence in terms of her knowledge is.
Would that not, would that not be a reasonable inference because of their living situation that she would know, even though she didn't say that?
No, it's a two-bedroom apartment, and the evidence was that he often would take her into another room to change the diaper, which is, this maneuver is linked up to, to the diaper changes in the, in the evidence.
Now, what do we do with the medical evidence that says that the force that was used with regard to the bicycling was a force associated with a motor vehicle collision?
So, two things to say about that, and I want to make sure I get to both of them, because they're both important. But first, I just want to push back on that a little bit. I think it's, it's a misreading of Dr. Kleiman's testimony. He repeatedly refuses to quantify the amount of force that would be required to cause these fractures. He says he can't testify about how much force, he can only testify about what types of forces. And that the, and this testimony only relates to one specific set of fractures. There are the rib fractures near the baby's spine. And he says that fractures in that location are not typically caused in ordinary household accidents. But instead, the mechanism for that kind of injury is a compression of the chest. And on cross-examination, he talks, they, there's a little bit of back and forth about CPR, and he says that they're sometimes seen from CPR or from difficult deliveries where the chest is compressed. But the thing about the car accident is he's saying that in, he doesn't see these types of injuries from accidental causes, except for high-energy, high-velocity accidents. But he doesn't speak to the amount of force that would be required to cause them through the mechanism of a, of a compression. And in fact, he specifically says that it's outside of his area of expertise to characterize that, that the amount of force. The other thing that I wanted to say about that is that, again, it only relates to this one specific set of fractures, and it would require speculation to think that the one occasion on which she saw him inflict an injury is the same occasion when that specific.
But didn't, didn't she herself say that there was a causal connection between what, what the boyfriend had done and the child's injuries?
Yes. She said, once she heard, once she heard that the x-rays had revealed these fractures, so once she was told that the child's ribs were broken, she realized that what she had seen him do might have caused the injury.
But not to state the obvious, that's not available for the mens rea.
That's right. It's, it's not until after, I don't think that her realization after she was told that the ribs were broken.
That was in the interview or the police?
It was, it was during the interview with the DCF investigator and the police, yes. So, I don't think that that provides any insight. I mean, it certainly shows that at least one time, she saw him pushing too hard. And I think that that's fair to say, that there was one occasion, and it's in her, she.
It doesn't show that she has a realization that what he was doing was dangerous.
Yes, but.
If she comes to that realization.
Well, once she discovers that the child is injured, she has realized that what he did was perhaps more dangerous than she previously thought. But that can't tell us anything about what she knew prior to the x-rays being taken. And, and all of this has to be viewed in the context of the only evidence about what a caretaker of this child would have noticed based on the injuries that were present, which is the Commonwealth's expert testimony from Dr. Wilson, that it would have caused her to be fussy, but that a caretaker would not be able to distinguish that from fussiness because she's cold, or because she's hungry, or needs to be changed. And the specific testimony that a doctor examining this child would not necessarily notice these injuries at all. And I, I just can't see how it's reasonable to think that a first-time mother during the first month of her new baby's life, based on fussiness that would not cause alarm to a medical professional, would know that her partner is, is extremely likely to substantially injure their child if she goes and, and takes a shower and leaves them alone together, which is what we're talking about here. It's, she left him to, to watch the baby while she took a shower. She's not, you know, out partying. She's not, there's, this is, this is a, from all outward appearances, a model home for raising a child. There's no evidence of domestic violence in this household. There's no drug use. There's, I mean, there's, there absolutely is no reason, based on the evidence admitted at trial, for her to have thought that this man was dangerously unfit to care for a child. If there's no more questions, I'll rest on my brief.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
May it please the court, Marsha Slingerland for the Commonwealth. The trial judge here found that the defendant plainly knew that her boyfriend was mistreating this child before the guitar incident, and the evidence supports his determination.
What, what would be the evidence that supports it?
Okay. There's testimony, and again, this is a required finding standard, so in the light most favorable to the Commonwealth. The evidence would show that, starting about May 11th is the date that Ms. Dragata learned of the bicycle maneuver. She told Amos that day about the maneuver. He used the maneuver, decided it didn't work, and started using his own maneuver. The testimony was that while they were living in New Hampshire, which was on May 11th, they began to move from New Hampshire to Massachusetts. they began to move from New Hampshire to Massachusetts between May 14th and May 18th. He's doing the maneuver, his own maneuver, the knees into the belly maneuver while he's in New Hampshire, while he's in, while they're in...
North Andover.
North Andover. And then he stops in North Andover. There's testimony that, from Ms. Dragata, Ms. Dragata telling the DCF investigator that this happened pretty consistently. It was done most, or pretty often, pretty consistently for about a week or so.
What do we do, though, that the judge found her not guilty of the charge that related to that?
Because I understand his rationale to be, it was that maneuver that put her on notice. Arguably, she's starting, he's starting to do this maneuver and maybe he found that she hadn't got enough notice. Or maybe he gave her a break. But clearly, he found, his, his finding was that there was mistreatment before the guitar incident, which happens on Memorial Day weekend. So what, what the defendant reasonably should have known in the circumstances was that he is engaged, he doesn't know how to handle a child, she knows that. She knows that. He's, he's gone off on his own tangent and he's doing his own maneuver, which is causing the child to cry. She, there's testimony from both...
Is that, is, is that a problem if it's similar to what the doctor had suggested? I mean, that, that makes sense, doesn't it?
That the doctor suggesting...
His variation of the bicycle move, he thought it worked. He said it worked, right?
That's what he said. Ms., the defendant here didn't say anything about that. What she said is that the baby would cry. When she's asked by Silverio, you know, what would have caused this? And she said, "The maneuver." And she should, the fact that the baby, this is a two-and-a-half to four-and-a-half-week-old child. And I think it's reasonable to infer the child is experiencing some distress when the cry is happening at the time of the maneuver. And this is not a maneuver that the pediatrician said was okay. And, and this defendant knows that it's different. She's very clear on that. It's a knees, you push the knees up into the stomach and down. So that is a compression of the chest, which is consistent with the radiologist's testimony as to the type of injury, the type of force that would cause these injuries.
What's the reaction of the child? You said the child cried. Were there other reactions that would put her on notice of that it was harming the child more than the discomfort that was attended to her condition?
Other than the one time?
Well, I, I guess my position would be, over the course of a week, we have a very young child and there's the crying associated with the maneuver. There's the, the time where she says she recognized the child, that this may be too much for the child. So clearly, she's on notice at that point that the child is being mishandled.
I'm a little confused. When does she see the pediatrician, she, with the child, or, or does...
Well, May 11th, well, May 11th was when he showed her the bicycle maneuver.
And she doesn't see the pediatrician again?
Right.
With the child?
Right.
So no one sees the child after the maneuvers have been done?
Until June 3rd, when they presented...
Until the x-rays.
That, that's right. So there's a two-week, from roughly May 11th to June 3rd, that, that's when this is happening.
It's happening, but she's not getting it checked by a pediatrician?
No.
The child's not crying to an extent that she needs to take the child to the doctor.
I get, well, I guess I would differ as to, and you can look at the record.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, because it's a new mother and everything, you know, you'd, you'd think if the child was really crying a lot, or really fussing a lot, that they would be, she would be taking her to the doctor.
She didn't.
Well, her...
Well, she did as soon as...
As soon as the arm was broken.
No, but, I mean, her...
But she didn't realize that the arm was broken, she knew that there was the arm.
She knew there was some, there was something wrong.
Went immediately to the ER.
That's right.
Your, your, your brother, he's not really her brother, but recall brother, says that after she said, you know, "You really shouldn't be doing that," that she had no, there's no evidence that she knew that he was continuing to do that. Do you agree?
I think it depends on how you read the timeline here. There's testimony that he continued for about a week using it. And if you're looking at the timeline, you're talking May 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, 15th. So maybe you end up in the week before Memorial Day is when, is, is when it would have stopped. It's not clear exactly when it stopped, except that if you take, and again, this is in the light most favorable to the Commonwealth, if you take...
That she would have known it is the question.
Right.
I'm sorry, should she have known that it's...
That he did not stop it even though she said, "Please stop doing that."
The, I guess the, the point would be that she should not have left the child because she knew enough about what he was doing to the child, causing it to cry. I mean, what else are you going to hear from a...
So your, your, your position is that when, now, how old, by the way, is, is Ms. Dragata at the time?
I believe, maybe early...
Nineteen?
The defendant here?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I thought she was older, but I'm not positive.
We have, we have a first-time mother?
Yes.
And a first-time father, who we know is not the biological father?
Right.
And she sees him do something with the child and she says, "You know, that's too rough, you should stop doing that." And your view is that as soon as that happens, a mother has an obligation to, to not permit that person to touch the child again?
I think she should, a reasonable person in her circumstances would, if you look at all the evidence that she knew or should have known, that the child, there's a high likelihood that that child would be subjected to substantial bodily harm based on the crying. And also, there's testimony by Dr. Wilson, every, the, the broken leg would have caused the child fussiness and to cry. Also...
Babies fuss and cry all the time.
But, yes, but not in connection, I mean, it's clear that if the child is responding and, and, and expressing distress by crying at the time this weird maneuver is being performed, that should alert somebody, "Hey, he's a first-time person, he doesn't know how to hold the child, and look what he's doing, and that's okay?"
So the objective, objectively reasonable basis to find her liable is that she knew from May 11th to June 3rd that he was doing this constantly and when he did this, she would cry, the baby would cry.
That, that's correct.
Well, let me ask you this. The, the x-ray showed broken ribs, right?
They did, yes.
Okay, wouldn't a child, or anybody for that matter, with broken ribs, I mean, wouldn't you expect a reaction that would cause you to run to the ER? I mean, this, this crying is just happening when he's doing the maneuver. It's not something that's persistent, right? So, so if, if there's, if there's this kind of injury, how would she know that that's happened by the child's reaction?
There's testimony from Dr. Wilson that if the child was lifted, because this baby doesn't move or roll or hold up its head or do much of anything, that if you lift the child up, the child would have been fussy for the broken ribs.
But there were, there was testimony from the mother, that is, Ms. Dragata's mother and sister. But it, it wasn't, I didn't get the impression that they would say the child could be fussy and, and would cry, but it wasn't, I don't, nobody said it was more unusual from, she had five children.
That's right. And, and when they were residing in the home and where, Mom was helping out, she was taking the baby at night, she, there were a lot of people in this open layout house. However, when they moved to Massachusetts, things changed. There was nobody there to be up at night. It was the two of them. And so Ms. Dragata and Amos were, were there in this house together, two bedrooms upstairs, an open living room connected to a kitchen. It was not a large house, I think it may be, it may twelve or to, twelve to fourteen-hundred square feet there may be. But so, so they're living in this house and she knows what his maneuver is doing to the child. Also, if you would take a look, I, to understand the sort of compression that might, to help you understand what is involved when you're pressing on a chest, which is, that's very consistent with exactly what the radiologist said. There's Exhibit B for identification, the radiologist explains very clearly exactly what happens. And there's a diagram that shows the rib cage, and then when it's compressed and how those injuries to the spine occurred. There are 22 fractures on this child, seven of which are on the back part of the rib cage, which the radiologist testified were extremely unusual in infants, overwhelmingly seen in victims of abuse. And not only that, there were two lateral fractures.
But, but the point is, did she know? I mean, everybody understands that the injuries happened. The issue in this case is, what did she know and when did she know it?
Right.
And I'm just not getting a clear picture here that there was enough happening in that house, at least as far as the child was concerned, to clue the mother in that something really bad is happening here. You've got broken ribs, you want, you expect a screaming child.
Fussy or crying when the extremities moved?
Screaming, I mean, if you break a rib, don't you scream out loud and...
Was there evidence specifically, other than the maneuver, that she cried when the extremities were moved?
The doctor said that's what would have happened.
Yeah, but, but we don't have any evidence that it did happen.
It's just what you might expect.
The grandmother, excuse me, the grandmother did have some contact with the baby, I think, in this period of time, didn't she? Because didn't she say something about some kind of a noise or something she heard and or felt in the baby's back?
That was when they were living in New Hampshire, a crunching sound.
Yeah, and, but they went, or they called the pediatrician and said, "Don't worry about it."
Because, especially because it wasn't painful.
Yes, but so this has nothing to do with the fractures?
No.
Oh, okay.
Can I just ask, why, why are we saying that she should not have expected Mr. Amos to stop when she told him to stop? Is there anything to, to say that in the past she had told him not to do things and he still did them?
The, the evidence on that point would be that she had told him what the doctor had showed her. It was a gentle maneuver, which was, as she recalls it, moving the legs forward and backward gently to sort of dislodge any gas or stool. He instead doesn't listen to her. He does what he wants to do, which I'd suggest, he wants to stop the baby from crying, and he lifts up the legs, bends the legs, which is, by the way, where all the fractures are in the knees and on one of the ankles, and jams it into...
I understand and I, I agree that that's why he, that she was injured, but she didn't know that at the time. And the question is, if she didn't know that, that the baby was being hurt so badly, once she found out that the baby was being hurt, she told Mr. Amos to stop? And I know he, it sounds like he didn't, but there's no evidence to show that she knew that.
She knew that he, um, there isn't, but there is evidence that a reasonable person would have realized, based on what had happened, that she had told him a maneuver and he hadn't followed her direction. And I...
So leaving, leaving the child alone with him is what...
Is not a sufficient intervention. You need, this is a newborn child, very, very fragile, two-and-a-half weeks to four-and-a-half weeks old, somebody who doesn't know how to hold a child and is, is, is making the child cry every time he's doing this maneuver that he's come up with. That should be enough to put a, a reasonable person on notice. This, this, this person should not be left with the child unsupervised because he's going to be hurt, she's going to be hurt.
So let's assume you win, and let's assume that after the decision comes out, you go to a birthing clinic and you're speaking to mothers and fathers and you're providing advice as to when they should remove the child from the care of the other parent. What do you tell them, based on the decision you want us to write?
Pay attention to, you have a little tiny baby, it's very important to under, they can't talk, they can't tell you what's happening to them, you need to listen. You're, if something's happening and they're showing distress, understand that...
When do you say it is a crime for them not to remove the child from that parent's care?
That will, when a reasonable person should have known the, the gravity of the harm and this person at the very...
Didn't the doctor say that, that people, I mean, she didn't think anything was particularly wrong until the, the second x-ray happened? I mean, she didn't recognize the gravity of the harm?
She understood, well, being in the business, she understood there was a broken arm and so a full skeletal...
Right, but just examining, I mean, but just when the child...
No, and, and there was testimony that, that fractures do get better. And it's unclear exactly how long it takes for a rib fracture to heal. It may hurt in the beginning and then you get used to it, it's, it's unclear. Clearly, though, it hurts and a child would cry when the fractures occurred. That was very clear. It's unclear how long that pain would, would go on, but, but, but clearly, the connection between the, the, the maneuver and, and the crying should be something to alert an ordinary person.
I'm wondering, you know, is there evidence at all about, I mean, because even after these maneuvers and so forth, I mean, presumably the mother changed the baby's diaper, picked the child up, hugged the baby, rocked the baby and so forth. Nothing to indicate that the baby was sort of crying during any of those?
Just, just what Dr. Wilson testified was, this was what you would expect, the child would cry and be upset and would respond to that sort of movement.
Okay, so we just have the doctor suggesting what, what would happen in all of those instances? Not any evidence that in fact it did happen?
No, the only, the, the evidence we have is, is, is the defendant's recognition of this maneuver and what was happening. There is one other thing, the stool, that this, this maneuver produced a stool. And the appeals court found that the compression was, was sufficiently forceful to, to produce stool. And that, this is not the gentle maneuver that would produce a stool i- in, in a gentle way. This is forceful compression causing the child to defecate. So that, I suggest, might add to the mix.
The appeals court?
I'm sorry?
That's the appeals court.
I, I, I know.
I, I mean, no, I don't mean the appeals court is not us, but I mean, that's not the trial, that's not a finding from the...
No, and he was, as you know, the fact finder, and, and he just gave that one statement that clearly she knew that the child was being harmed before the guitar incident. I would ask you also if you might consider...
Fine, but I'll give you 30 seconds.
Okay, consciousness of guilt evidence. When the defendant first spoke to, the, the first person she spoke to was Dr. Wilson, she did not tell her that, that Amos was doing these, this particular maneuver, even though she knew it, because she had already spoken to Amos about the maneuver on Memorial Day weekend and had learned that he had been doing this dipping and flipping and the baby crashed down. She doesn't tell Dr. Wilson that at that point. She also doesn't...
But that was after she learned of the broken bones?
No, she doesn't know, because she only learns the bones are broken when she talks to Silverio, which is Friday afternoon, I think around 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock. So her first, she, her first interview is with Dr. Wilson, and she's not upfront about what she knows about either the bicycle maneuver or the, the knees-to-belly method.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
SJC number 12195, the guardianship of KN.
Good morning, Ms. Bilchin.
Thanks. Good morning, your honors. May it please the court, Claudia Bulgan for the appellanted child. Your honors, this case asks this court to rule that an indigent guardian who qualifies as a de facto parent should have the procedural due process right to appointed counsel in a removal proceeding. The first issue to address is...
Sorry, in a removal proceeding where the mother or parent is entitled to counsel or in every removal proceeding?
The removal proceeding at issue here is brought by the mother and the mother has counsel.
Right, but are you limiting it in the same way that we did to the mother, that it's only where there is a colorable claim by the mother that that would trigger the right? Or are you saying whenever there is any guardianship, even if the mother's not entitled to counsel, that the guardian would be?
Yes, your honor, I'm limiting it to when a parent has the right to appointed counsel. Or even, even if the parent doesn't exercise her right to appointed counsel, say has retained counsel, the, the triggering event in this case, and the reason why this situation is so unfair, is that the guardian is the only one in this removal proceeding without the right to appointed counsel.
Can we start at the beginning here? The guardian is not the party here asking for a lawyer, it's the child.
That's right.
That's a problem.
This is not a procedurally perfect case. The guardian did request counsel at the trial level and did attempt to appeal, but that appeal was dismissed for procedural error. Then after that...
So the question in this case is then, not the guardian's right, but the threshold question is whether the child has the right to press the guardian's rights such as it is. is, to an attorney, right?
Right. The standing issue, though, should not hold this court up from deciding this very important point for three main reasons. Number one, the child's best interests in these proceedings is the touchstone. The child is coming here and saying, "It is in my interest to have the guardian have appointed counsel." Why? Because it will be more likely that the relevant information gets before the probate court judge, and then the decision will be in my, the child's, best interest, so...
Substantively, is that your last argument, your, I mean, if you, is that, in other words, your last argument seemed to be, if you don't buy that there's a due process, putting the standing part, if you don't buy that there's a due process right on the part of the guardian, at least the best interests of the child could trigger the need for counsel for the guardian?
That is part of that argument, and that is also part of the de facto parent argument, because in any proceeding with regard to the welfare of a child, it has to be in the child's best interests. And recognizing the guardian's de facto parent rights and appointing her counsel with respect to that is in the child's interest with respect to standing, and also with respect to a potential equity argument if this court decides to go that route.
Have, have we decided a case where a de facto parent has a liberty interest in the relationship with the child?
No, your honor, there is a vacuum in this court's jurisprudence on the issue of de facto parentage. There are cases that discuss how that status is attained, and best interests of the child is very important in how that status is, is, is allowed in the first place, which is why I say to Justice Botzford's question, best interest is the overriding feature here.
And how, and how would you have us define de facto parent?
With respect to the cases, it's pretty relatively clear what this court uses to define de facto parentage. Some period of time living with the child, whether there's a two-year requirement or not, might be an open question. But the person lives with the child, cares for the child, is the primary caretaker, more than 50% of the child, does so without the expectation or primarily motivated by financial compensation. And essentially, this relationship has come about either with the agreement of the legal parent or because the legal parent is unable to provide these, these functions for the child. So, so that is, is pretty clear in this court's jurisprudence. When a relationship comes about, what isn't clear is after that status has come about, then what? Then what rights does a de facto parent have going forward with that status? And what this case brings to bear is that at the very least, this status confers some procedural due process protections. There, there's recently suggesting, the case law that recently suggests that maybe de facto parentage isn't, doesn't have all the rights and privileges of legal parents, for substantive due process reasons. And that's fine, because this is not a substantive due process case. This is a procedural due process case. What procedural...
But you need a substantive right for the procedural due process to, to, to get triggered, don't you?
That's not what the Supreme Court seems to suggest. The Smith versus Offer case suggests that there are substantive, there are fundamental rights that trigger substantive due process protections, and then there are liberty interests that may not be fundamental that trigger procedural due process protections. And that's the distinction that this case brings up.
Is this something we should leave in the hands of the judge?
I'm sorry?
The discretion whether to appoint a, a, a lawyer?
That might be acceptable if there was no liberty interest to protect. So my first argument is that there's a liberty interest to protect.
If we don't find a liberty interest, it could be something that's in the discretion of the judge, right?
And, and, and the reason that that's my second argument, your honor, is because currently judges don't think they have even that discretion, that there's, there's no statutory or other right to counsel for a guardian.
And that's what you're asking us to, obviously.
Yes, exactly. But the issue with that is that now it's a case-by-case basis. And, you know, in the real world of the probate court, that essentially means that some de facto parent guardians will get counsel and some won't. And there's inherent unfairness in that as well. So I'm asking for a right to counsel, not a right to ask that the judge exercise his discretion to appoint counsel, although if that's what this court decides, that's more than a guardian has right now, which is why I asked for that as an alternative.
But just to stress the point, you're saying that the guardian has a due process right separate and distinct from the best interest of the child?
That's correct, but it furthers the best interest of the child.
It's a liberty interest?
It's a, it's a, yes, your honor, there, there has to be a liberty interest to trigger procedural due process.
Right, that's what I, that's what I was trying to say, but I didn't say it as well as you did. So, and what, and the liberty interest is...
In the parenting, in the parent-like relationship, in the 11 years of care, and the relationship that the child and the guardian share that is the closest akin to a parental relationship, very, very close to a parental relationship. And just because there's not a biological relationship, that the guardian isn't the actual mother, doesn't mean that the Constitution doesn't protect that parent-like relationship, at least with regard to some procedural due process protections.
Help me to understand this liberty interest. Am I correct that at a guardianship hearing, if it turns out that the parent is fit, the parent will get the child back?
Exactly, and that's substantive. And I, this is not a case of trying to denigrate the legal parent's rights. The issue here is simply procedural. It's in the child's best interest to have all of the relevant information in front of the probate court judge.
That's why I'm trying to sort out child best interest and the liberty interest, because it seems that the liberty interest in a de facto parent, assuming that it is the most wonderful relationship in the world, is one which will end as a de facto parent if the parent is deemed fit.
Correct.
So it is a conditional liberty interest, that is, that I am your de facto parent unless, unless your parent is fit?
Well, let me back up from that. A de facto parent relationship can continue even if a parent is fit.
Right, but that's not the issue with regard to the guardianship.
The issue with regard to the guardianship here is whether, certainly the issue of who gets custody is the ultimate issue in a guardianship removal proceeding, but that's not at issue here. The only thing at issue here is the procedural right of a de facto parent to have an attorney to present the evidence of unfitness if indeed she has the burden to do so, which it appears under the case law, even though it's quite uncertain that she does. And that's the problem, the one unrepresented party here.
Well, what, the child is represented. What's going to be missing from the presentation if the child is represented, and the child can represent whatever it is that's in her best interest?
Let me answer that with two child-centered answers and two guardian-centered answers. It's always going to be in the child's best interest to have more information rather than less. But if the child is the only one with a lawyer on the side of staying with the guardian, what's really going to happen, your honor, is you're saying, "Well, child, even though you're the child in this proceeding, you're practically speaking going to carry the burden of proving your own mother unfit." And how can that be in the child's best interests? So those are the two child-centered reasons. The two guardian-centered reasons is that this situation puts the counsel for the child in a very, very bad position, because the guardian is not the one she represents, but yet the guardian is the only adult in this situation. So that guardian is going to be requesting, "Should I testify? Should I file this piece of paper? Should I not?" And the child's counsel doesn't represent the guardian. So with respect to that, that's a problem. And then with respect to perhaps giving counsel to a guardian only when the child is opposed to the guardian, now we're making the rights of an adult dependent on a child's decision-making. What if a 13-year-old gets mad at the guardian because the guardian took the Nintendo away and says, "Right before trial, well, I'm going to change my position"? And so now you have a child's counsel that's all of a sudden contrary to the guardian in a guardian-facing trial with no lawyer.
So is the liberty interest that you're describing the interest of a de facto parent in ensuring that the child is not in the custody of an unfit parent?
The liberty interest is in the actual parent-child relationship. And to the extent that, that that liberty interest is child-centered, absolutely. To the extent that that liberty interest is guardianship-centered, does the guardian want, does, does the guardian have the right in their relationship to try to protect the child from whatever risks and whatever potential harm may befall the child, including return of custody to an unfit parent?
And, and you, and this liberty interest exists, I, I take it, it's not a case-by-case determination in terms of, I mean, here's my question. Is every guardian a de facto parent?
No, your honor. Every guardian is not.
You have to adjudicate whether ex-guardian qualifies as a de facto parent?
That would be necessary, but that's similar to the burdens that this court placed on mothers in LB. In order to get counsel for a meritorious removal proceeding, the, the, the pro se mother first has to come to court and show a meritorious claim.
But that's a little different than proving you're, you're worthy, I mean, that you've got a de facto, I mean, that's a much more complicated proposition.
Well, it, it, it may be or it may not be, because the, the criteria for what is a de facto parent, at least what can be a meritorious claim for a de facto parent, is durational, and it is who took more care of this child than anyone else, which in, in long-term guardianships where grandma is taking care of the child, is not going to be a very difficult proposition to meet. If, you know, so, so it can actually be perhaps as simple as what this court suggested in LB, a series of, you know, a form with a series of checkboxes. "I've cared for this child for more than two years. I've done more than 50% of the caretaking. I'm doing so without financial compensation or not, not for financial compensation primarily."
Why doesn't that all go back to Justice Gaziano's point, that the, that the judge should decide on a case-by-case basis of whether or not there is this liberty interest in a de facto parent?
Well, to some extent, it's the same as deciding meritorious claim. So there is some decision-making on a case-by-case basis. Not all guardians are de facto parents. So the issue is, does this court say de facto parent guardians have a liberty interest? And if, Judge, you find this guardian is a de facto parent, then counsel is warranted. So to some extent, it's case-by-case, but there's this overriding principle, and that's what I'm advocating for on behalf of the child and the guardian in this case, that it is not just case-by-case. If a judge feels like it or not, there's some, there's some objective criteria. You are a de facto parent guardian. You have a liberty interest. There's a removal proceeding. The mom has counsel. I'm probably going to put the burden of proof on you, therefore you get a lawyer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Kirchway, good morning.
Morning. May it please the court, Deborah Kirchway for the appellate mother. A, a theme in your questions I noticed this morning is, should we just leave it to the judge's discretion? And I would answer, no. I mean, I think that what child is asking you to do here is to take the extraordinary step of creating this completely new category of litigants out of two existing categories, to confer upon these litigants an unprecedented liberty interest that conflicts with that of the long-established liberty interests that parents and children have, and to arm those litigants with state, state-paid counsel.
So you're saying that a judge does not even have the discretion to do it if the judge chooses to do that now?
Well, I would ask, I would say if the judge were to find such a liberty interest, arguably, they would probably have the authority to do that. But I would ask that you expressly find that de facto parents or guardians or combinations thereof do not have a liberty interest in the relationship with the child while there is a parent in the picture.
So that would be foreclosing the judge from making a discretionary determination to appoint counsel?
I would recommend, yes, that there would be...
So if they have it now, you say we should foreclose it?
Excuse me?
If we, if judges believe that they have that discretion now, we should basically take this opportunity to foreclose it?
I do not believe that guardian, when there is a, a parent challenging, seeking the return of their child, and there has been no finding of unfitness, that that parent should not be up against state-paid attorneys.
Even though she has an attorney?
Even though she has an attorney.
State-paid attorney.
Because that, that, that Smith v. Offer case, the U.S. Supreme Court has made it very clear that to the extent that there may be, you may want to find some kind of liberty interest, because there is, we all must concede, there is some kind, there certainly is a relationship between a, a de facto parent slash guardian, as the, as the, my sister has defined it, and the child. But Smith v. Offer makes it very clear that that is, that the parent's liberty interest comes first.
Can I just ask you, before we get too far in, I understand why the parent doesn't want to have the guardian to have counsel, but why do you have standing to, to say one way or the other?
I don't, why do I have...
Why does the parent get to weigh in on why the guardian should or should not have counsel?
Well, I would argue that, that the child didn't have standing to, to make this case in the first place, and obviously that's in the brief. But to the extent that the child has any right to argue it, then certainly the parent has any equal opportunity to weigh in.
So, so what is this interest? I mean, look, I, I'll put aside the facts of this case, okay? Rather typical case, grandmother taking care of child because the mother is either very young or is, has opiate abuse or other issues that she cannot be an appropriate parent. The grandmother really has been, for all practical purposes, the mother for the child for many, many years, and now the mother says, "I want the child back." Your view is grandmother has no, no interest in how that proceeding turns out?
Well, my view is, there's a difference between an interest in the abstract and a protected liberty interest. And I would argue that certainly she has an interest, but does she have a protected liberty interest vis-à-vis a parent who has a well-established liberty interest in that relationship? I would say no.
But the parent's liberty interest derives simply because of biology?
Well, the parents...
Either the father gave the sperm or the mother gave the birth, but the person who is, for all practical purposes, the mother here can be the grandmother.
The legal parent in a guardianship case is the parent in this case, the mother, is the legal parent. And Smith v. Offer makes it very clear that when you have a legal parent, first of all, remember that when a legal parent, when there's been no finding of unfitness, as there has been here, no finding of unfitness, a legal parent is presumed to act in the best interests of the child. Parents enter into guardianships for a variety of reasons. In this case, very young parent, okay? No, no findings of unfitness, parent is presumed to act in the best interests of the child. So the parent is doing her job as a parent to do what's best for her child. And when she comes back and says, "I'm ready. I'm an adult. I'm ready to take care of my child," then there should be no extra burden, no state-armed parties who, excuse me, no parties who are armed with state-paid attorneys to fight against her right to custody of her child.
The grandmother should then have sought to have the mother declared unfit?
If, the grandmother certainly had the opportunity to seek to adopt. And yes, that would have necessar, she had that opportunity.
You want to push the grandmother to that left to avoid the situation that we have here, which is presumably a, a family relationship? I mean, the, the mother and the daughter and the granddaughter are doing things together presumably.
Right, and if the gra, if the chi, if the mother is ready to have the child back, there should be no state-funded impediments to her getting the child back.
But that's what the hearing, but that's what the hearing's for, to find out if the mother's ready to have the child back. And I don't understand why there's not some equitable right for the, for the probate and family court judge to look at this unique situation and see whether or not, in the interest of the child, if not, no other reason, that the guardian should have counsel.
Well, if, if you, let me, let me address some of the, if I may, some of the issues that would lead to such an equitable decision, and, and suggest that if, if you were to go that route and say, "Leave it to the trial, judge's discretion," it's going to spawn massive litigation. And that's what I think is a problem. So in terms of, one of the issues that child has raised is that, well... So in terms of, one of the issues that child has raised is that, well, it's in the child's best interest to ensure that the court has all the information. Well, that's true, but the probate court is very skilled at working with pro se litigants, very used to working with pro se litigants, and does it all the time.
Just take this case. If I, obviously you know the facts much better than I do, but this is a child who has significant health and behavioral and developmental issues to contend with. I am going to assume that there's a fair amount of medical evidence, there may be some psychological evidence, I don't know. How is the guardian to deal with that without counsel to assist?
Well, bear in mind, that, again, the child here has counsel, and that protects the child's interests. The child's counsel is going to gather all the information that is needed and present it to the judge. The child and the guardian, in this case, are aligned, their positions are completely aligned.
That may not, that may not be the case.
In this case, it is the case. In, in other, I'm, I'm not sure whether we're talking about this case or other cases, but...
Well, I mean, I, I'm positing a case in which there is a child who presents with a lot of, a lot of issues that are technical or, you know, complicated, that it would, it's going to be hard for the guardian to put the, this is sort of Ms. Bogdan's point, to put the information in a form that a judge is going to find helpful without some legal assistance. But it's very, but it's very critical information from the perspective of figuring out what is the best interest of the child.
Well, first of all, to, in this case, where the guardian and the child's positions are aligned, to assume that guardian, counsel for guardian will act in the child's best interests is, is invalid. The, the guardian's attorney, obviously, that person's duty is to act in the interests of the guardian, so...
Well, the issue in the case is going to be the best interests of the child, so to whatever extent the guardian's attorney is misdirecting the court, that's not going to fly.
Well, and, and there's, what, the thing is, is here, there is no evidence that this guardian can't have a fair trial without state-paid counsel. It's premature to assume that that's the case.
You would agree, right, that the mother, would you say the same about the mother? No evidence that the mother cannot have a fair trial without state-paid counsel, but we found that the mother needs state-paid counsel.
Well, yes, and, and I...
You think that was a mistake?
I do, actually. Yeah, I, I think in a private, can, a private proceeding where the state is not involved, that it was a mistake, but, but it is what it is now.
Even, even the liberty interest of the mom?
Well, in any, in any case, I...
Moving on.
I, I want to just, I guess, clarify that, that, you know, the liberty interests, even if you are going to find that there's a liberty interest, then you get to the balancing test, okay? And, and obviously, the, the guardian's liberty interest is going to be much, much lesser, less than that of the parent.
I think that's what we started with. If, if one size doesn't fit all, why don't we leave this to our talented probate judges to figure this out?
Well, let me suggest this. I believe this vital determination should actually be left to the legislature. Right now, there's, there's insufficient information in front of this court about the practical and the financial implications of any additional right to counsel.
What do we make of the Attorney General's position?
Well, that's, that's one position, but the decision to expend additional funds is left to the legislature. And to add to the, by comparison, the child...
Sorry, which, which, I mean, if there's a right to counsel, do we say, there's a right to counsel, but we're not going to declare it?
I'm hoping, I'm, I...
Going to wait for the legislature to declare what the rights are?
I advocate that you do not find that there is a right to counsel.
So, but if, if there is a right to counsel, you agree, we can't leave it to the legislature, that's what, that's what a right means.
If you find that there is a protected liberty interest and that a right to counsel is necessary, then you, no, you don't have to leave it for the legislature.
If there is a protected liberty interest, is it your position that it's, the right to counsel is a separate question, or...
Yes, absolutely.
So you're, you're contesting two questions. One, no liberty interest from your perspective.
Correct.
Two, even if there is no right to counsel, is that...
Right. Okay, so on the first one, no liberty interest, I would say, in de facto parents in general, I would argue, yes, if there's no parent in the picture, give them a liberty interest. They're the ones who have this relationship, and there's no one to, for it to conflict with, okay? But if there's a parent in the picture, the, the de facto parents should not have a protected liberty interest. So if we, if we, if you do find that there is some protected liberty interest, it is necessarily less than that of a parent. And so that's the fact, factor one, that there's private interests. The child's interests are already well-protected by the right to counsel, by the opportunity for guardian ad litem, and also under existing de facto parent law. All of those already protect the child's interests. And now on the second factor of the balancing process, as I mentioned, there's no evidence here that this guardian can't get a fair trial. And in terms of the state's interest, I was getting, circling back to where I was before, the child cites some numbers of what she feels would, the numbers might be in this case. I spoke to the Deputy Chief Counsel of Children and Family Law for CPCS on Friday, four days ago. He said there are already counties where the demand for appointed counsel in care and protection cases outstrips the supply. And it wouldn't take much for us to get to the point...
Did he know that you were coming here to argue against that position?
Yes, he did. Yes.
So this is somebody authorized to speak on behalf of CPCS?
Excuse me?
This is someone authorized to speak on behalf of CPCS?
I believe so, Your Honor. He's the Deputy Chief Counsel.
This is Mr. Bennett, this is who?
Mike DeCida.
Mrs. Mr. DeCida, okay.
Yes. He said that there are currently counties where there have been dozens of cases this year where the parents who have the fundamental liberty interest, their rights have, have gone delayed. Seventy-two-hour hearings that they're entitled to have not been held on a timely basis because of a lack of counsel. So granting a new liberty interest to a new category of people is going to undermine the liberty interests that already exist for parents and children. And I would urge you, urge you to think long and hard on this case before making a decision adverse to the child. Thank you.
Thank you.
Court, all rise. Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye. All persons having anything further to do before the Honorable and justices of the Supreme Judicial Court, now sitting at Lawrence, with been informed Commonwealth, at present depart, the sitting of this court is now adjourned. God save the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I'm going to start breaking down. Go ahead, Tom.
I was just talking to Justice Lowey about trying to arrange for me to come in and have lunch with him next week and have something to talk about.
Yeah.
Who's the judicial secretary?
Yeah, her name is Lynn Pepe, P.E.P.P.E.
Lynn Pepe, is it in, is it in the red book?
It's, it's not, because she's filling in for somebody else.
For Mike.
She's filling in for somebody else who's on sick leave, but why don't I, I have your email address. Do you want me to email you the number of Lynn Pepe? Or, she's, she's sort of filling in in that chair.
She should have a schedule.
Definitely, definitely, definitely.
And then obviously, you know, with the...
Let me make a note of it, Tom, to make sure that I don't forget. But I will, I will send you her number.
Congratulations.
Okay, it went really well, didn't it?
Well, just seeing Casey Ryan in here, like...
Oh, well, it's, you know, do the best we can.
Yes, sir.
I thought the cases played out better than, sometimes when you pick them, you get more, you need a lot of credit. The cases played out very well today.
Now we're just going to have to take it all the time.
They're all here, they're all set. It should be all set.
Right.
Hey. Yeah, it's a group, yep, for the plates, everything's in here.
Pretty, makes sure the loon grabs a sign-in sheet out there?
Okay, brother.
The loon, the loons do.
Yeah, every, every other, I think. Really, really good, yeah. What's up, buddy? How are you? Good, good to see you. Everything all right?
Unbelievable.
It was great, it was great. Sometimes when we pick those cases, we don't know whether, how they're going to play out, but these played out really, really well, subject matter-wise, I thought. Thanks all for coming and helping out the lunch, and, you know, this is, good luck. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, it, I'm, I'm, good luck, Dan. Good luck, Dan. Do you need me for anything? All right, all right, okay. All right, all right. Hey, Claudia, great job, did a really great job. Did you enjoy yourself today?
I always do.
Yeah, you really, really, hey, just seems real comfortable.
Yep. I mean, it's always fun to care, you know? It was unlikely to get the James County...
Oh, don't, 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 when is that on for?
It's, you totally not, January.
Right, right. So I think I was able to, yeah, I pushed that to February because of Chancie. Yeah, don't worry about that. That's your reply, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get it in by the end of the month, but, you know, I'm still behind.
No, 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 don't, don't, that's on for February, right? Yeah, 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 no worries. No, don't even worry, don't, don't sweat that. The only time I ever sweat, I sweat in murder one cases is the DAs really encroach on that 30-day reply time a lot, and it, and it bothers me, and so it's not really fair to you guys. Some defense counsel roll with it, others, you know, not so comfortable. It's, you know, it's hard to get someone to say, do you mind having 30 days, under 30 days when you haven't seen the, the red brief yet? So, but don't worry about it.
I'll put a motion in.
Yeah, no problem, Claudia. Yeah, it won't be an issue, it won't be an issue. All right, good job today. Yeah, it was nice, it was very nice. Yeah, don't worry, yeah, everything went great. Thanks a lot, thank you.
So, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you go ahead.
I was going to say, so, Mr. McDonough just let me know that there's a Q and A session at 12:30.
Yes.
And he wanted to record that as well.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Oh, no.
Is that any short?
No, no, not, not, not at all.
Who wants to record that?
Sorry?
Who wants to record that?
Keith.
He does want to record that? Okay, all right.
And maybe he doesn't want to record it, but we don't have, we can reinforce it.
Okay.
Maybe it's clear.
All right, I would just want to let them, I would want the justices to know who's being recorded first, to see if it's okay.
Okay. And if not, we can still leave the microphones here.
Okay, all right.
So what that will do is, nothing will be recorded.
Okay.
But, you know, the audio will be projected.
Okay.
Can you just make sure what your test is?
Okay.
So maybe that's what...
Okay, all right, I see, all right, makes sense.
But the audio, I know you'll want the audio.
Yes, just, I know you probably don't have it from last year, but occasionally my address again for that. Worked out well last year, I loaded it up to Quot Smart and...
Okay. The CD works, or...
Yeah, that's, it was perfect last year. Jeff, Jeff just uploaded it, and it worked really well.
Yeah, he did a real-time thing, apparently. You just had to play it back proportionally.
Oh.
Of course, more doesn't make or, or any other format.
Yeah.
But I'll make sure that you have the audio and then, you know...
Thank you, you're very kind.
Fair.
Thank you. And I don't know if we'll see it before next year, but it won't be 14 months, it'll be, actually be 10 months, because I think it's going to be in October again, out in Greenfield.
We need you, that's what I heard.
Yeah, we're thinking, I don't know. I'm Fran.
Hi, Fran, my name is Frances.
Hi, how are you, Marsha? Oh, how are you?
So when you were talking about next week, my, my journey.
Oh, very good, very good.
So she just showed her team.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful.
Mr. Clark, Clark Caneley?
I'm sorry, guys, pardon me.
That's picking you up, just so you know, it's recording still.
Oh, very well, thank you.
I just got a call.
Thank you.
It's not recording anymore, but the audio is...
That's what they're saying.
Okay, thank you.
They just called and said they can hear it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, so...
Thank you.
What we'll do is, yeah, I'll make sure that the audio's...
I'll be careful, okay, all right, thanks, thanks, all these, thank you, okay.
We can do this, if the oversights aren't...
Hey, how are you? How can I help you?
Okay, it just says live feed mic is on, I mean, brody, I told you.
Okay, he's going in, do you want to write a note to him? I could give it to him, because the problem is, they're in lockdown, like, they're in lockdown, they're in Samba right now, which is, if you want to wait around, if you grab, try to grab, because he's doing a Q and A with the students at 12:30, 12:45. I hate to do that to him.
I know, I have to go back to session one.
I'm sorry. Do you want to write a note to him? Yeah, please, right here, just, just do me a favor, just, just, just write a note to him on here if you would, okay? And I'll, and I'll make sure he gets it.
Yeah, I'll text you.
I'm going to be here until, I have conference call one, so when can I get the goods from you?
I'll just grab the stuff while I'm at lunch. And then, just let me know before you leave. I'll be here till at least...
How are you? Oh, Matt, Fran, how are you? How you doing? How's it going? It's good to see you.
Yes, I'll, I'll have it with me.
All right, Frankie, I will make sure, I'll make sure I know the, the name, so, well, I'll make sure he gets this, okay?
Appreciate it.
He's going to be sorry he missed you. Do you want me to number it all, or?
No, he has...
All right, okay, all right, okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, Frankie, how you doing? Were you here the whole time?
That was great.
You, you, God bless you. You've got a practice to run, you know, it's not, it's not...
I, I cordoned the day off sometime, you know, so...
Did you? Well, we often, we often worry about how the cases, even though we try to pick on different criteria, how they're going to play out when they're live, and these, these look pretty, these look pretty good.
The reinforcement's going to be live, but recording is not...
I mean, they're...
You want us to go to the reinforcement?
I thought so, too. This, this, lovely, I, I sit there, have you been a trial lawyer, a publican? I sit there in awe that withstand the...
That's through the camera. We've, we've given them a...
Oh, that's a shame. When they're on you, oh, that's just...
But I've been trying to get back to where you, and make the points you want to make after you're thrown.
Yes, for, should we stay here or go down?
What do you prefer?
Maybe closer in the jury box?
I think, yeah.
Let's go down.
Because they're really far away otherwise.
Three volunteers can move it out for this.
Okay, we'll get them. You'll get them, you'll get them. You'll get yours.
If you wish, we could interview if you would just give her the eye.
Here's a fancy chair, you see that?
Yeah.
First of all equals with a fancy chair.
Live mic, don't worry. We're not going to say anything we're going to regret, don't worry.
Is that going to bother you?
Why don't we just, yeah, we'll just grab this here.
Do you have a couple more of them?
Welcome, thank you. You've had your pizza. How was, how was Mr. Hogan as a chef?
Excellent.
Why didn't I tell you very, very briefly, I want to get to your questions. I can, I can. I can, I can. We're live mic, be careful. It's a live mic, we're not going there, so. I want to get, I want to get straight to your questions because we're supposed to be heading off to a lunch soon. But let me just tell you very briefly what, where we were is that after we hear these arguments, we go back into a room which we call the sommeul. I think it's French for together. And we then discuss each case. There's one judge who was assigned to recite with regard to it. That judge is the one who has spent the most time with it. That judge is the one who will be asked to give his or her view as to how the case should turn out. And then each of us will then, after hearing that recommendation, each of us in order of seniority will then discuss whether they agree or disagree and the reasons for. And at the end of that discussion, we have a rough vision as to how the opinion should turn out. And then I will assign the writing of that opinion to a judge who's in the majority. So that's where we just were trying to do that. We didn't finish all of them, but we, we did finish some. We'll finish the rest on Thursday, will be next week. So, I know that you folks have had questions. You've been working on it, so why don't we get it before you? And let you ask whatever question you may.
Hello, I'm Carrie Hayes, I'm a history teacher at Lawrence High School. Kayla Ortega has a question for you.
Thank you.
Hello, um, the question I had is, I'm curious why the counsel said a state paid lawyer is a mistake.
Could you say it a little louder?
That I'm curious why the counsel said a state paid lawyer is a mistake.
You're so awake. I, I'll give you my view of why she did. I think she did because she represents the mother of this child who is seeking to end the guardianship and have the child back. And I think from the mother's perspective, she has a better shot at persuading the judge that she should be able to get the child back if she doesn't have a lawyer on the other side who's arguing against that position. That's, that's a sort of practical view. The other one, I think, is goes to the legal question, which is, I think she thinks that because a, a, a mother, a biological mother has a constitutional interest in being able to bring up the child and, and to protect the relationship between the mother and the child. And I think her point is, once you get outside of the biological parents, it's hard to see why the constitution is necessarily protecting or creating a relationship between somebody who isn't the biological parent and that child, such that you would need a lawyer to protect it. I, I mean, I think that's her argument about why it shouldn't happen. Thank you.
Yes, should we stay here or go down?
What do you prefer?
Maybe closer in the jury box.
I think, yeah.
Let's go down.
Yeah, we'll go down.
Because they're really far away otherwise.
And three volunteers can do an interview after this.
Okay, we'll get those. You'll get them. You'll get them. You'll get yours. You'll get yours.
If you wish to do an interview, if you would just give them a hurt the eye.
Here's a fancy chair. You see that?
Yeah.
First of all, equals with a fancy chair.
Mike, don't worry. We're not going to say anything we're going to regret. Don't worry.
Is that going to bother you?
Why don't we just, yeah, we'll just grab.
We have a couple more of them.
Welcome. Thank you. You've had your pizza. How was, how was Mr. Hogan as a chef? Why didn't I tell you very, very briefly, I want to get to your questions. I can't. I can't. I can't. My mic, be careful. It's a live mic. We're not even going there. So. I want to get, I want to get straight to your questions because we're supposed to be heading off to a lunch soon. But let me just tell you very briefly what, where we were is that after we hear these arguments, we go back into a room which we call the somme. I think it's French for together. And we then discuss each case. There's one judge who was assigned to recite with regard to it. That judge is the one who spent the most time with it. That judge is the one who will be asked to give his or her view as to how the case should turn out. And then each of us will then, after hearing that recommendation, each of us, in order of seniority, will then discuss whether they agree or disagree and the reasons for. And at the end of that discussion, we have a rough vision as to how the opinion should turn out. And then I will assign the writing of that opinion to a judge with a majority. So that's where we just were trying to do that. We didn't finish all of them, but we, we did finish some. We'll finish the rest on Thursday, which will be next week. So I know that you folks have had questions that have been, you've been working on. So why don't we give it more to you and let you ask whatever question you need.
Hi, I'm Jerry Hayes. I'm the district attorney at Lawrence High School. Kayla Ortega has a question for you.
Thank you.
Hello. Question I had is, I'm curious why the counsel said a state paid lawyer is a mistake.
Did you say it a little louder?
That I'm curious why the counsel said a state paid lawyer is a mistake.
Well, so are we. I, I'll give you my view of why she did. I think she did because she represents the mother of this child who is seeking to end the guardianship and have the child back. And I think from the mother's perspective, she has a better shot at persuading the judge that she should be able to get the child back if she doesn't have a lawyer on the other side who's arguing against that position. That's, that's a sort of practical view. The other one, I think, is goes to the legal question, which is, I think she thinks that because a, a, a mother, a biological mother, has a constitutional interest in being able to bring up the child and, and to protect the relationship between the mother and the child. And I think her point is, once you get outside of the biological parents, it's hard to see why the constitution is necessarily protecting or creating a relationship between somebody who isn't the biological parent and that child, such that you would need a lawyer to protect it. I mean, I think that's her argument about why it shouldn't happen.
Thank you.
Great Lawrence.
Hi, good, good kids. First off, thank you for having us. The question will come from Deedee Murray. Yes?
I have a question on my telephone. This is Tyler. Will the defendant's boyfriend ever be able to be around children again? And can his future wife be allowed to let him take care of her children?
Well, I can tell you that the child is being raised by her father. Her biological father. Biological father. So I don't know what the future holds, whether the outcome of this case will have any effect on what happens in the future for the child. But the child is not with, with the mother now. And I don't know if the mother is with her boyfriend now. I don't, just, we don't, we don't get all of the information.
That's a very helpful question for everybody that you've asked. It gives us an opportunity to say that when we have a case, we're addressing, with rare exceptions, the issues that are raised. And there's a record, limited to the record. So all these things that are going on beyond the case, we may not even know about. Never mind have our rulings address.
But he, but he was convicted of a crime and the judge who heard the case had the opportunity to sentence him to whatever punishment he saw fit to sentence him. So he was punished for what he did and that was up to the judge at the time.
The other thing we do know that we might not otherwise know is that the child is all right physically now, which is, she's, I guess, three years old.
She's a very healthy child.
And she's a healthy child, so.
And he was, he was not the biological father of the child. So he did not have any interest as a father. Justice Galizia was correct. A judge would be able, at the time of sentencing, as a condition of probation, to say, I'm going to prevent you from being near a child, just as a, just as a judge. If there's a domestic violence against a spouse or a girlfriend, you can say, I'm going to require you to stay away from that person. If he were the father, in order to prevent him from being the parent, you'd have to have a termination of parental rights hearing, at which there'd be a right to counsel for him if he were the father, because that's a liberty interest in the father in terms of being able to parent the child. So it actually, at some level, manages to blend into the earlier question in terms of the rights of a parent.
Yeah, I would just say that, that the person who was convicted in this case did receive a sentence in state prison for a year to two years. And then I think there was a probation period afterwards. But to your question, there will be a point in time when the criminal justice system has completed, he's completed his sentence, whatever it may be, even the probation. And after that point in time, I don't think there would be any reason why he could not have, you know, if he is married and has a child, have a relationship with that child.
That's why oftentimes in cases where you see adults involved with violence with children, that a condition of probation includes parenting classes.
Thanks for having us. We're at the Center Catholic High School. Our question comes from a senior justice.
I was just wondering, what type of advice would you give to students like ourselves who are just, to study law in the future going forward?
Take history of art in college.
I think my advice would be, I've been teaching law school for 25 years and I've seen a lot of really happy law students and happy graduates and a lot that are unhappy. So I would make sure before you go to law school that that's really what you want to do.
And in terms of, in terms of preparation, reading a newspaper each day is a good place to start. Or listening to WBUR radio in the morning or at night. But, 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 but being able to think critically about the kind of news which is happening all around and begin to think through issues of policy, issues of right and wrong, that, that's a good start, especially at your age, as you begin to think as to whether or not you want to move into the, into the realm of the law.
Yeah. I, I think that there's a sense in which law school is like advanced civics education. You know, following up on what Justice Gantz just said. In addition to reading newspapers, I think I would urge you to study anything that makes you think very hard. Whether, and whatever, you know, whatever subjects you choose to do in, 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 in college can be as varied as biochemistry and philosophy. It doesn't matter, so long as you really have to think very hard, very analytically. Because I think that's a, and, and stay open to new experience.
I was just going to say, do what you're interested in and try to, try to do things that allow you to do a lot of writing, because writing is something that you would need in law school and beyond.
There are, you know, also, I think, a lot of, particularly public agencies, courts, district attorney's offices and other places often have interns that, in, in the summer, I mean, if you really wanted to sort of just see how things work at the, you know, at, at the, the basic level, sort of day-to-day level. So that's, that's another thing that I think for, for college students, particularly as you get farther in college, and certainly law students, that, that's definitely so. But I mean, to sort of get a feel for, you know, what, what a day-to-day life of a lawyer is like.
Now, I should add that you can, you don't need to come to Boston to hear an SJC argument. All of our arguments are webcasts and available online at the Supreme Traditional Court website. We have, we have, we have all of our arguments dating back, I think, about eight or nine years. Which are available. The U.S. Supreme Court does not do that, but we do. So if any of you want to go home and interested to look at arguments made last year or last month, you're certainly, that is available to do that. And I know that the Boston Herald has put today's argument online and it's, and I guess was live broadcast.
We're live now.
We're live now. So there is that, that possibility to.
Yes, I, I forgot to thank you for inviting us, but.
Thank you for coming.
Carter has a question.
Hi.
Hi.
What is the next step, the next step after this hearing?
The next step after the hearing is, we've just had the first step, which is for us to be discussing the case. Then the, the justice will be writing the opinion. Will be working with his or her law clerk to write a draft and a second draft and a third draft and a fourth draft. And when that justice is satisfied that it is ready for us, that justice will circulate that opinion among all of us. We will all get a copy. And on the Wednesday after that is done, all of us will sit again in a room and we will very carefully discuss that opinion. Anything from, I don't, I'm not quite sure I understand what your argument is on page six or seven to changes in terms of the use of words or things as, or things as fundamental as I think your argument is in error. We have very, we worked very, very hard on our opinions and we would love at the consultation for everyone to say, don't change a word. But that is not generally what, at least I hear with regard to it. There are generally a great deal of comments. I think I can say, I've been doing this for seven years and I think I can say that when I have gone back to redraft, which I have done many, many, many times, probably for the majority of my opinions, that I think that the product that I have produced after that discussion is a better product than I delivered when I walked into that room. So, so that is that process. If a judge were to disagree, then that judge can take the case and write a dissent with regard to it or, or can agree but have a different twist on it. We call that a concurrence, where you agree with the outcome but have something different you want to say with regard to it. And there are times in which that dissent becomes the majority, that the person who writes the dissent gets enough votes to say that is now the view of the court. Sometimes even that dissenter has persuaded the author to change his or her view. That has happened a number of times. It happened to me. Once in which I was persuaded by one of my colleagues, I won't tell you her name, to change an opinion and it turned out differently because of the quality of that dissent. So we do, we, we are a court which listens very carefully to each other. We're prepared to revisit things that we write, even though we've worked very hard about it, very hard with regard to it. And very often we will amend our view as we hear better arguments.
Victor Martinez from Grilla Labs, thank you for having us. Any questions or want to ask a question?
On the case of the veteran, would the first outcome of the first offense be taken into consideration of deciding on his second offense?
The, the, under the, the, the law that governs the operating under the influence, is that case, that's the one you. Under the law, if you, if you, if it is a second offense, there are limitations on what a judge, just taking that law by itself. You can't, there are limitations on what the sentence can be. You can't dismiss it. You can't do a bunch of other things with it. You can't continue it without a finding. The question that's really raised by this case is whether the valor act that was, that was the subject of the argument kind of takes over. And so that, although that would be true under the operating under the influence law, because of the valor act, if somebody qualified, maybe he could, he, it's all going to he with the valor act, he could get the, the second OUI dismissed. So that, that is actually the question that we have to decide.
So we, we sometimes have two sets of laws that conflict. So the legislature passes one law, the legislature passes another law and it's our job to see where the law is and to interpret those statutes to tell everybody what the law actually is based upon those conflicting laws.
How are they going to work together?
Thank you. Our next question comes from Junior Justin Lawrence.
Good afternoon. How are judges assigned to cases?
We've been wondering that. Thank you for your question.
I, I assign cases to judges very often based on their prior experience. If there is, for instance, a judge who is, now, we've all sat in Superior Court, which is, I think, the first time in the history of these, of this court that all of us have come from the same court. In the past, we've had, we would have a justice who would come from different courts, the Probate and Family Court or the, or the District Court. Or from no court. But there are times in which certain of us have certain backgrounds and experiences which would make that person perhaps a better author for that case. Sometimes a justice has written something about the issue and if a new justice were to write something, they would have to interpret what that earlier justice said. And so the thought is, who, who better to interpret what somebody said than the person who wrote that initially? And I, there's also a matter of balancing. I mean, I, some cases are extraordinarily complex and will require a great deal of time. Some will require a bit less time. So I try to balance the workload. So that's the short version for how I try to allocate cases among the various justices.
But I, I, could I just add, because this is, see, Chief Justice Gantz is the third chief justice under whom I have served on this court. And what I have experienced over those years is that always the chief justice is the person who assigns the case, but they have had different philosophies about how to do it. For example, the first chief justice that I served under Chief Justice Marshall, I think her philosophy was more, if you've written on some subjects before, I'm going to assign it to somebody else the second time around. So it's a very much of, of the chief's prerogative as to what criteria he or she might use to do that. We don't get to say what case we want to write either. It's totally up to him.
I know you have to be a minute ago in another location, so can we thank the justice?
As I said before, we're relieved, we are extraordinarily grateful for you to be here today. It matters.
And impressed. I mean, I, how you could stay awake.
So we thank you and your teachers all for, for being here today.
Thank you all very much. Keep on working hard.